Hey, welcome, everybody. We'll start in just a sec here, just getting people logged in. Jacob is here. Kenzie. Max Firestein. Okay. See here, Mary. All right. This may or may not be everybody we've got, but it looks like I've got most people logged in now. So, we are gonna get started. So Ethan, yes. When we were discussing the Telegraph last time, you were right, it was a little bit later than I thought it was. It was actually eighteen forty-four that the first Telegraph message was sent, so I'll have a little mea culpa there, but. Yeah, the, I'm just trying to make sure we got everyone. Alright, so. Oh, yeah, okay. We'll get started here. So. The invention of the battery by Count Volta over in Italy and kind of the relationship. Of, you know, how current works and electricity and kind of the relationship between current and magnetism. Had been discovered by various European scientists. And so. There was a. Let's see, I'll get Scott logged in here. There was a. Kind of a breakthrough in communication when Samuel Morse sent the first Telegraph message from Washington DC to Baltimore. Okay, Autumn is jumping in, and so is Zach Van den Bosch. Alright. And so. Welcome, everybody. Another person, Olivia. Alright. Nathan, mark down quick here. Alright, so anyway, this of course is gonna usher in a whole new age of. Communication because with Morse code, you can send messages by creating, you know. Letters and numbers with a series of beeps, you know, long beeps versus short beeps. And so people could send a very fast message, a telegram and telegram offices or Telegraph offices were put up. All across the east eastern part of the United States and all across Europe and. The world of communication was revolutionized. So. That takes us to the campaign of eighteen forty-four and guess who's back? Once again. For his next attempt at running for president. Henry Clay is now the leader of the Whig Party and is hoping that now that the anti-anti Masonic people are no longer going to split the vote against him. That he can somehow pull out of victory. He, he is very confident of victory. You know, the the Whigs had won the the previous election. The Democrats basically say he's a drinker, a gambler, a carouser. But Clay actually probably did more damage to himself by flip flopping on the issue of whether Texas should be annexed. And alienating voters in both the North and the South. So, does anybody remember? Which side of the country is in favor of annexing Texas?
Wouldn't it be the South? Because they want, they want another state with slavery.
Yes, so this would vastly expand the the quote slave powers of the South. And of course, northerners are very worried about it, but then there's also kind of this, just this expansionist kind of. You know, thing going on in the United States where, you know, manifest destiny is is becoming something that's kind of taking hold. So. The question is. You know, where is the pulse of the American public? Like, if you were trying to get people to vote for you, would you be on the side of? Annexing Texas or not? Anybody wanna take a stab at that? Like, where do you think the American public's at on this one? Because I mean, the the vast majority of the public's in the North. And the North doesn't wanna see slave power increased, but at the same time. There's other territory out there as well, and the United States could become bigger and more powerful. Nobody, nobody wants to take a stab at that one? Alright, well. We'll actually answer it. Go ahead, Zach. I see your hand.
Well, I think like a lot of the northern territory had been expanded up in like the the Midwest region. So I think it would be fair, I guess, to allow the southern states to push through the southern regions. Because the North already had like a lot of territory up in the, up in the, you know, the plains region.
The upper Louisiana repurchase area, you are correct. Yeah, so there, there are still states to to come into the country from that area. So there's an argument to be made that it's only fair that the South be allowed to annex Texas. So. The Democrats go all in on Texas because in their nominating convention, the two party leaders. Martin Van Buren, who kind of still controls the old Jackson machine and Louis Cass, who's kind of this new. You know, party leader guy who's, I mean, he's basically. A leader of like, you know, you're kind of your western, southern group of people. They deadlock neither one would can get the nomination because the other ones blocking them. And they have to pick a candidate, like at some point, they've gotta have a candidate. So at the nominating convention. They end up choosing what is known as a dark horse candidate. So we're gonna talk about this. This is our first dark horse candidate. This is actually a reference to horse racing. Does anybody know what is a dark horse? Or what do you think a dark horse is? It's it's kind of a, if you don't do horse racing, it's gonna be a little hard to like, get this one. Go ahead, Kenzie.
Okay, so I'm just assuming from my prior knowledge and I don't know. That the dark horse is the one that you don't expect to win, but pulls through and wins at the end by a law.
Yeah, it's it's the one that nobody knows about that kind of comes out of nowhere and ends up winning the race. So it's, yeah, you're, you're exactly right. It's, this is, this is a horse racing reference and essentially. You know, the the guy who ends up getting the nomination is someone that is basically a political unknown, relatively speaking. And that is like acceptable to both sides. Both sides are okay. Well, he's not one of theirs. So he's kind of like, you know, a political unknown to a certain extent, like he's in the party, he's, he's got some, you know, chops, but. He's not like totally on one side. So they end up picking James K. Polk, who was. A protege of Andrew Jackson, who still has a very strong amount of influence in the Democratic Party. And so James K. Polk, like I said, with the Democrats goes all in on Texas. They are like totally in favor of of annexing Texas. And they try to draw northerners in as well by saying, we want all of Oregon territory. So the, so the actual slogan, even though really the the issue is Texas, the actual slogan for the Democrats. In this, again, this is where you get start to see slogans becoming a thing, just like you saw before with, you know. Tippecanoe and Tyler too, in the last election, is fifty-four forty or fight. Meaning, we want the entire Oregon, Oregon territory, or we're gonna fight Britain. Okay. Now, we, you know, this isn't too far after the War of eighteen twelve, which was a total disaster. But the manifest destiny crowd in the United States, kind of that, that imperialist wanna make our country bigger, stronger, better crowd. Is all about that, and they're able to appeal to kind of the northern branch of that by. By going with that. And during this time, there is a growing dissatisfaction within the. Within the abolitionist movement. With some of the people who are leading it, like for instance, we talked about William Lloyd Garrison, who is kind of one of the most prominent abolitionists in the country. He is like, not just for ending slavery, he's for equal rights for African Americans and for women. And so the anti, the American Anti-Slavery Society actually split in eighteen forty. And there was a less radical wing. They wanna end slavery because they wanna kind of end the South's ability to make so much money without. You know, having to hire people, etc. But they don't want African Americans having equal rights. And so this is the more moderate wing of the abolitionist group. And they actually formed their own political party called the Liberty Party, and they nominate James G. Bernie to be their candidate. So the fact that. There are abolitionist candidates now running as third party candidates in the North, like from the North. Well, and actually, this guy is like a Kentucky guy, but mostly these are northerners who are voting for it. Is 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 very, you know, disconcerting to the South. And again, this is all part of that sectionalism kind of trend that we see as we get further in. So you can see here in the election of eighteen forty-four, that Henry Clay once again goes down in defeat. Because even though the popular vote is pretty close, and once again, you could say. That that two percent that of that went to Bernie from the Liberty Party. Could have been Clay votes, and that could have put him right at fifty percent, and that could have made a difference in some critical states where it was really close. But because he just wasn't able to get across the finish line in a lot of these states. James Polk was able to pull out a victory, kind of an unlikely political victory. Because everybody thought Clay was gonna win. He was the established guy. And James Polk becomes our eleventh president. He's our second president from the state of Tennessee, the first being Jackson. They called him Young Hickory as a way of kind of referencing his, you know, how he was a protege of Jackson. And this guy is, if I could just put one word to describe him, it would be workaholic. So what do you notice about these two pictures here? This one and this one? Anyone?
His hair is white.
Yeah, he, he goes from being. A, and who just said that, by the way, because I didn't quite catch that. I was Autumn, okay. Yeah, so he literally works himself to the point where he, his hair goes gray. Like, you do see that with a lot of presidents, like they get, they come into office, and then by the time they leave there, they've got gray hair. I mean, part of it's just being that age, but also a lot of it is the stress of the office. This guy is very, very focused because he intends to keep his campaign promises of getting territory. In the West, and of course, he's actually going to be the one who's going to start the Mexican-American War, which I know that's Zach's slide, so I won't get into it, but. He, of course, had run on the slogan of fifty-four forty or fight, but he will actually compromise with the British in eighteen forty-six. We're gonna talk about it. And and split Oregon territory with them on the forty-ninth parallel, but. He's not a very personable guy. He's, he's kind of cold, formal, suspicious of other people, suspicious of his own subordinates. But he does get things done. So. James Polk is now our. President, and enough people have moved into the state of Florida, or I'm sorry, into Florida territory to make it into a state. And that mostly had to do with. You know, the defeat of Osceola and the Seminoles. Now, there is a third Seminole War, I believe I do have a slide on it with some Seminoles, there's only like five hundred of them who are like, you know. Way deep in the Everglades under a guy named Billy Bowleggs, but. You know, the, there were basically, most of the Seminoles were deported and Florida quickly filled up with people who wanted to come in and set themselves up as the new. White, rich, landowning class of the South. And of course. So they come in as our twenty-seventh state. One of the big campaign promises of the Polk administration had been to allow Texas into the Union, and so the Lone Star Republic. Basically was able to become a state because. You know, John Tyler had actually decided to annex them in April of eighteen forty-four. But the treaty was defeated in the Whig-controlled Senate because northerners were blocking it because it needed a two-thirds vote. And so Tyler then suggested that Congress just pass what's known as a joint resolution to annex Texas. And that basically was able to pass, and so Texas then, of course, became a big campaign issue like we talked about. And Polk followed through with the plans that Tyler had set in motion, and we ended up formally taking the territory and turning it into our twenty-eighth state. On December twenty-ninth, eighteen forty-five. So you've got two slave states that have entered the Union. So out of that Louisiana territory area up in the North, you've got some northern states that wanna come in, so. The Iowa Indians were in the area beyond kind of the Mississippi that Black Hawk had gone into. And, you know, as people began to move into these areas beyond the Mississippi, they realized there's just, there's no forest anymore. And so that actually created some challenges when it came to, you know, how do I build a house if there's no logs to build it with? But sometimes people had to build sod houses as kind of their first houses out in the, in the plains. But eventually, they were able to kind of, you know, import enough to get what they needed. The, there's a huge influx of new settlers, many of them German, that are coming into the country around this time, we'll be talking about it. And so they are part of that, that wave of immigration that causes Iowa to fill up with farmers and reach the sixty thousand person threshold. And come into the Union as our twenty-ninth state, as in as a free state. I'm sure you all have heard of this before. But the, you know, the territory out here, the Spanish territory of California. Was an attractive place to live in a lot of ways. I mean, I'm sorry, it's Mexican, not Spanish. But it was a very dangerous journey. So like, just like trying to get to Oregon territory, it's very dangerous. And there was a tragedy when a caravan of ninety settlers from, that was headed across the Great Plains from Independence, Missouri. Ended up getting caught in a mountain pass, and they were trapped and. Of course, does, does anyone know what, what ends up happening with the Donner Party? Why do we still talk about it?
They cannibalized each other.
Yeah, in order to survive, they basically, because they ran out of food, they had to, they started eating the dead bodies of those who had died. And so they, they, some of the survivors had to resort to cannibalism in order to make it through. But basically, they get trapped in a mountain pass in the winter, and they send some people out to get help, but most of them have to kind of hunker down. And so that is the Donner Party. Just. Four full months of kind of hunkered down with not enough food. So that is. You know, still one of those stories that we go back to because, you know, it's kind of disgusting for people to eat each other. Also, we have two major advances in the news. Media, which actually are going to speed up the, the, the news process, and we still actually have one of these organizations around today. That is, is, you know, and there are other competitors as well, but. The first big thing is the Rotary Press. So instead of pressing down on a piece of paper with like a big, you know, like flat thing that you, you would, you would assemble the. The letters in, you use a drum instead to produce, to to actually produce newspapers, and it's actually much, much faster. So the inventor of this was Richard Marcheau. And that quickly became the standard machine that was used across the country to create newspapers. So that is going to create a much bigger, you know, number of newspapers out there. And then, of course, the second big one is the, what's known as the Rotary Press. I'm sorry, not the Rotary Press, the Wire Service. And this, this is based off of the Telegraphs. So the Associated Press, the AP, which is still around today. Is basically this wire service. Does anybody know, like, if you go to like the, the, the website for AP or for Reuters? What can you get there that you can't get, for instance, at like CNN or Fox or any of the other news channels? What, what's the, what's the difference between those websites and any of the others that are out there? Anybody peruse the AP at all? Alright, well. You know, I didn't know if anybody did, but basically, it's like up to the minute stuff that's happening, like stuff that happened like five minutes ago. Like, if you wanted to see what happened five minutes ago, you would go to the Wire Service, and so. There were reporters stationed all over the place. So like, everybody, the, the Associated Press basically kind of pools its resources from reporters that are working for papers all over the country. And they use the Telegraph to send very short kind of summaries of what was happening. To major newspapers, so then those major newspapers could get the scoop on other newspapers. So the Wire Service is still around today, even though it was really kind of born to take advantage of the Telegraph and how much faster. You could get things by.
This is my slide.
Yes, and so Ethan, I will let you take off on this one. Go ahead.
Hold on, let me pull up our point on my phone.
Alright, and you, and you sent me a, a video, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So. Yeah, the starting of the Smithsonian is a bit boring at first, but then gets weird around the middle. So in eighteen twenty-nine, there was a British scientist and estate owner named James Smithson. And when he, and well, he died then, and he left most of his wealth to his nephew, Henry James Hungerford. However. Later, Hungerford died childless, and that left the estate basically with no. Inheritor. So according to the will, it said it, the state would to be, would be passed to. The United States of America to found at Washington under the name of the Smithsonian Institution, an establishment for the increase and diffusion of knowledge among men. Congress accepted the bequest on July first, eighteen thirty-six, and diplomat Richard Rush, under President Andrew Jackson, was sent to England to collect the bequest. Rush returned two years later in August with a hundred and five sacks of one hundred and four thousand nine hundred and sixty gold sovereign. This was equivalent to about five hundred thousand dollars at the time, and twelve million dollars today. However, when GDP is calculated into it, it's more equivalent to two hundred and twenty million dollars today.
Yeah. It's worth a lot, I mean.
And this is where the haggling starts. Congress spent eight years trying to agree on how to interpret for the increase and diffusion of knowledge. However, during that time, the bequest was invested into Arkansas State Bonds, which defaulted, defaulted most likely in the panic of eighteen thirty-nine.
Thirty-seven.
Oh, thirty-seven, sorry.
No problem.
And so, yeah, the problem was basically that the money was gone. And, well, one, they didn't use it for the, for the intended purpose. So John Quincy Adams then demanded Congress to repay the bonds with interest. And to specifically only use the money for the institution itself. Then finally, in eighteen forty-six, President James K. Polk then signed. The institution to be established as a trust instrumentality of the United States. And I have additional information about the scientist mentioned in the slide.
Yeah, absolutely. Go for it. Yeah, so just overall, though. What is this institution's like purpose and or point? Like, what, what is this now going to promote within our country?
The institution is meant to promote the, you know, teaching of science and also. For more research of science in the United States specifically, and brings in the United States into the international, like, scientific field. Sort of where before it kind of was just the backwoods country where no real great development was made.
Yeah, you had an occasional smart person who got recognized by Europe, but now we kind of have our own academy. And we have our own group of scientists who are all going to get, you know. Basically, you bring an invention or you bring a discovery to the, to the group, and the group then recognizes it, kind of like the Royal Academy of Sciences in, in Britain. You know, France has its version as well. So, okay, so go ahead with our, some of our first leading scientists.
So Louis Agassiz was a Swiss biologist who moved to the United States in eighteen forty-seven, I think, under Harvard. One of the things he was known for early on was he made a lot of discoveries in aquatic fossils and helped develop more. You know, thought out of basically taxonomy of ancient fish. And I think the thing he discovered was that those types of fish back then were not at all like today. So, and the thing that people most known for is that he proposed that Ice Ages happened.
Yes.
Periodically throughout Earth's history, and I think he proved it with like. Underground, it's like mineral deposits that only come from glaciers.
Yes, you are correct. Yep. Yeah, and that is like his biggest contribution is the whole concept of Ice Ages. Go ahead.
Okay, and next is a John, basically John Audubon, a French ornithologist who came to the United States. And was most known for his very deep and detailed illustrations of the species of bird in the United States.
Yeah, right. It's, and by the way, like, a lot of people pronounce it Audubon. If you've ever heard of the Audubon Society. But really, yeah, there are a bunch of bird watchers, and they, and they try to preserve birds and their habitats. So he was, so he's cataloging types of birds. Which is a whole thing, like the bird watching is a whole big thing, but go ahead.
Well, and next, I think, well, I don't know exactly. Well, and next, I think, well, I don't know exactly how to pr- pronounce his first name, I don't know if it's Asa or Asa.
Asa.
Asa Gray, uh, he was a botanist who was born in New York in the United States. And I think he was most notably, he worked a lot with Darwin's theories, which were still going around in time. And he proposed a way that could bridge the gap between evolution theory and religion. Cause he claimed that evolution was guided by a creator. And that however, in that stead, I think he sta- he stamped down the theory of hybridization within one species. Cause that didn't really agree with his own theory.
Right, and and you just have to remember that like, science is still kind of, you know, in its infancy in a lot of its various fields. Um, Darwin won't actually publish Origin of Species until eighteen fifty-nine. Uh, but some of these guys are going to make important contributions to that kind of shocking, you know.
I think the main thing about Asa Gray is he worked a lot with Darwin, I think he met Darwin on multiple occasions.
Yeah.
To, you know, discuss the idea of theories.
It's seen as so anti-religious, you know, um, to to say that men weren't created, but they were descended from monkeys and. You know, and and it, there's an incredible backlash from the religious community against.
Yeah, Asa Gray tried to, you know, quote, to basically. Calm the backlash with proposing how it could make sense under religious beliefs.
Right, so you have various professors in colleges who are like studying it and whatnot. But creationism by and far is still even the the stance of most of the scientific community. And when students go to school, they're learning kind of a version of creationism. But uh, we won't have a big confrontation over whether that will be taught in the public schools or not. Until the nineteen twenties with the Scopes Monkey Trial. Um, it'll take that long for it to kind of percolate all the way down to the high school level, but uh, yeah, that is um.
And that's all I kind of have for the slide.
Okay.
Video, and I think I have a quote from uh James Smithson. And it says, every man is a valuable member of society who by his observations, researches. And experiments procures knowledge for men.
Yes, yes, uh, and the Smithsonian is dedicated to uh preserving kind of the knowledge of America. Now, has anyone been to the Smithsonian? Um, uh, show of hands, anyone, um, the National Mall in Washington DC? All, it it has become kind of, okay, so Max, you've been there, uh, which which ones of the museums have you been to?
I went to the Smithsonian.
The Smithsonian, so did you go to kind of the 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 little palace type type thing? Cause I've been in there before, it's kind of like a little headquarters, uh, but then. All of the various museums that go with it are kind of cool, yeah, Lauren, what were you gonna say? Lauren?
Oh, I was just gonna say that I've been, but I was too young to remember.
Be young to remember, yeah, it's it's like I got the National Air and Space Museum, the the National Museum of American History. The African American History Museum, um, uh, there, I mean, the the Museum of Natural History. Uh, it, there's all kinds of really cool museums uh that that hold some of the great artifacts of American history. Um, in, within the Smithsonian, and they all lined what's known as the National Mall. So you, so like you visit Washington DC and that's the touristy thing that you do as you go and you visit all the museums. Uh, and then the National Mall, you know, it's like right there downtown, you see the the um, the Washington Monument, the Lincoln Memorial is there. Uh, so you know, th- that's all right there and it's all become part of the Smithsonian. So the Smithsonian is a huge institution now, um, and it it controls a lot of the the great artifacts of our history. Yeah, Zach, go ahead.
So the Lincoln Memorial and the Wa- uh Washington Memorial, those are part of the Smithsonian?
No, they're they're part of what's called the National Mall, which is kind of like this big grassy area. That it runs right down like in between the Capitol and the White House and everything, it's like uh the Capitol Building where Congress is. Uh, and so like, you know, and it's kind of like this grassy area and then sometimes they'll have like. You know, like, so then when they have like an inauguration, have you ever seen like the aerial photos, remember the big, you know, fight over how big the Trump, the crowd was for Trump's inauguration? Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, so like that, like they take an aerial shot of the National Mall, but along the sides of the National Mall are where all of the uh big museums. That are a part of the Smithsonian are, and then this little palace building is right there in the middle of the mall. Um, and it's kind of like, you know, in the heart of that Smithsonian network. But like at the National Air and Space Museum, they have one of the original Wright flyers, like the original airplanes built by the Wright Brothers. They have the capsule, um, uh, the Apollo eleven capsule that um. Brought the astronauts back down when they uh, you know, had had done their famous moon uh voyage. And and this, it's just some some really cool pieces of history. Some of, you know, like National Air and Space Museum isn't even gonna be a thing until after, you know, kind of the invention of flight, yeah, Zach, what were you gonna say?
Hey, so my dad was in, um, my dad went to uh Quantico, he went to the FBI National Academy.
Alright, is he FBI?
No, 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 he um, he was doing it for his work, um, cause it was like, it was free for him. So, cause like they needed some people to go so that they can have some kind of certification. I think, and um, he went with his, like a couple of his um coworkers. Uh, cause he worked at the Sheriff's Department in Williamson County. And um, he was there for like three months and like when he went to graduate, we all went up there with him. And I couldn't tell you which malls we went to, or or not malls, but museums, cause we went to so many museums. But like, I saw a whole bunch of stuff, we went to the Lincoln Memorial, which is huge.
Yeah, yeah.
To the George Washington Memorial, we saw the reflection pool.
Yeah.
Um, and then we also saw the, I think it's some kind of remembrance wall. With like all the people who fought in like World War Two or World War.
Yeah, you're you're probably thinking of the the wall for the Vietnam veterans, that's.
That must have been it.
Yeah, the the black wall with all the names on it, yeah.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Yeah, um, yeah, like we, we, my family and I have gone there. As a part of the Tennessee delegation for National History Day, like a number of years, whenever I had a student that would make it to Nationals, like we would go. Uh, as part of the big delegation from Tennessee and uh, it was just cool. Cause like we, so we took my son to see the Lincoln Memorial back when he was just a little, you know, uh, elementary school kid and. Um, we've gotten to go several times since then and just every time I go, I'm just, I I see more cool things that I didn't see before. Like they have Abraham Lincoln's hat from when he was shot in the in Ford Theater. They have that hat, um, that top hat uh in uh the National Museum of American History and just, it's so cool. Um, but anyway, there's a lot that has grown out of this, uh, so um, let me just pull up Ethan's uh video. Alright. And Ethan, are you, are you wanting to do the whole thing or just part of it?
When you think of the Smithsonian, you think of its spectacular museums like air and space.
Uh, it's like less than five minutes, I I don't know if you have time, but.
National Mall known as the castle.
Yeah, that's the castle.
But remarkably, very few know about the institution's founding donor and namesake, James Smithson. Or that his body lies within the castle in an elegant crypt, built for an Englishman who never stepped foot in America. But whose generosity made the Smithsonian Institution a reality. James Smithson was born in seventeen sixty-five, the illegitimate son of an English duke. His mother, a wealthy descendant of Henry the Seventh, made sure that young James was given the finest education. Smithson's passion was science. At Pembroke College in Oxford, he excelled at both chemistry and mineralogy. To pursue his passions, he traveled extensively throughout Europe, conducting field research. And at just twenty-two years of age, he was granted membership to the prestigious Royal Society of London. Over the next forty years, Smithson published twenty-seven scientific papers and was recognized as a highly accomplished chemist and mineralogist. In eighteen twenty-nine, at the age of sixty-four, James Smithson died in Genoa, Italy. A lifelong bachelor, Smithson willed his sizable estate to his nephew, Henry James Hungerford. It was an inheritance worth over five hundred thousand dollars, more than twelve million dollars at current value. But in the event Henry died without an heir, Smithson's will stipulated the money would go to the United States of America. To found at Washington, the Smithsonian Institution, an establishment for the increase and diffusion of knowledge. The motive behind Smithson's remarkable bequest remains a mystery. He'd never traveled to the United States and never publicly expressed an interest to create an American version of the Royal Society. However, when his nephew Henry died in eighteen thirty-five without an heir, Smithson's enormous donation was bound for the new world. In eighteen forty-six, the United States Congress created the Smithsonian Institution as a trust to be administered by a board of regents. James Smithson's dream had become a reality. Over fifty-five years later, one of the Smithsonian's regents, Alexander Graham Bell, received some troubling news. James Smithson's burial site in Genoa was to be displaced to make way for a stone quarry. Bell moved quickly, in nineteen oh-three, he received approval from his fellow regents to travel to Italy, exhume Smithson's remains. And transport them via boat to Washington DC. When Bell returned to DC in January nineteen oh-four with Smithson's remains, President Theodore Roosevelt sent the Marine Corps Band to welcome him. Roosevelt also ordered the US Cavalry to provide a horse-drawn carriage to bring him from the Navy Yard to the Smithsonian Castle. Once Smithson's coffin was safely housed in the institution, Bell said, my mission is ended. And I deliver into your hands the remains of this great benefactor of the United States. Today, James Smithson's crypt rests in a small mortuary chapel within the northern section of the Smithsonian Castle. A marble copy of Smithson's memorial plaque from the original grave site can be found on the crypt's wall.
Alright, yeah, so that 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 I think is an excellent little kind of um, uh. You know, look into uh the Smithsonian Institution, which really houses much of our 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 great, you know, museums nowadays. Um, and is part of a a great network, um, uh, that that really is is where a lot of. Uh, our our history and knowledge are preserved. Okay, so um, excellent job, Ethan, and that takes us to Zach's slide. So Zach, you are up.
I sent you a a document that has some images on it for you to use for the thing.
Do you want me to pull that up right now or do you wanna wait?
Um, I'd rather do it now so people can look at what I'm talking about.
Sounds good, let me pull that up. Okay, so we we've got it right here.
Yeah, and then I'll scroll it down and then, okay, so basically eighteen thirty-six, Texas forms its own republic. In uh March first of eighteen forty-five, Tyler, John Tyler Annexes, um, Texas. Uh, Polk sent John Simon thirty million dollars to negotiate um, some land for New Mexico, Texas and California. Um, Mexico didn't even hear him out, they were kind of worried about the US continue continued encroachment on their land and they didn't even accept the ambassador. Um, so Polk sends uh Zachary Taylor, General Zachary Taylor, to occupy the area between the Rio Grande and the Neusace River. You can see right, uh, the two little squiggle lines down at the bottom, the top is the one Neusace and the bottom is the Rio Grande where the border is today. So that was kind of disputed area where uh Texas split. Um, and basically Polk had Zachary Taylor kind of just wander around the strip until some Mexican soldier shot at him. So in the Thor- Thornton Affair, uh Mexicans, a soldier fires on the US soldiers, uh Polk gets Congress to declare war on May thirteenth of eighteen forty-six. He actually had a declaration of war already written, so he was kind of anticipating getting shot at.
Yeah, so he set the whole thing up, like the Thornton Affair is a setup, I mean, and we were wandering around in their country and they shot at us. And then we're like, you, you know, you scumbags and we declare war on them.
Okay, so an additional recall here uh added was the Treaty of Oregon was signed, so now the North gains more land up top, so now they're focusing on the Mexican region. Um, so war breaks out. Uh, they send current, uh, the Polks and uh Colonel Kearney out to take uh California and New Mexico. And he doesn't have much resistance, so uh really, there's two prongs of the war, they send uh Zachary Taylor down through the north. Um, and he, he wins Monterey and then wins at Buena Vista and then uh. But he kind of doesn't like the whole idea, like he's not too, he's not a big fan of the war. So Polk gets mad and then just decides to send Winfield Scott through uh Vera Cruz. And he wins Vera Cruz and marches on Mexico City and wins, um, eleven thousand five hundred US troops die. And nine thousand uh Mexican troops die, one of my favorite stories from this war is one of the Santa Anna. Our good old friend Santa Anna, who we've heard about before, was actually an annex. And uh Polk uh invites him back and sends him to Mexico and hopes to work out a peace treaty and then. Santa Anna immediately takes over the Mexican army and then goes to fight the Americans, that was a bit of a, not a good idea.
Yeah.
Uh, um, so some of the effects of this war, um, so Nicholas Trist negotiates treaty um with Mexico. Gets New Mexico, Utah, Nevada, Arizona, California, Texas and Western Colorado for about fifteen million dollars. So I guess they started out with three million dollars, so I, the real question here is how much is eleven thousand five hundred lives worth to you? Um, this is important for future things because uh many prominent Civil War generals were fighting. And in this war, including General Lee, uh General Somal Jackson, uh General Grant and General Pickett. Um, all get military training in this war. Lincoln gains prominence in his opposition of the war, uh, he gets nicknamed Spotty Lincoln. Because he he demands to know the exact spot of where the American soldiers were shot in this disputed area. Um.
Yes.
Uh.
As I said, a wig congressman in in the House of Representatives, yes.
Yes, um, so this leads to the compromise of eighteen fifty where they.
Oh, 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 yeah, don't get into the conflict of eighteen fifty, so you did an excellent job covering kind of the 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 three prongs. Cause you did mention the the prong that wants to California.
So just more strictly, um, I guess strictly towards the war. Some uh other backlash was uh Henry David Thoreau wrote civil disobedience. Because he he didn't want to pay taxes in a war that he saw was going to contribute to the expansion of slavery. So he didn't pay taxes for like six years and then they jailed him and then, and then his aunt. Immediately paid his bail on all of the back taxes, so you can kind of look at it as civil disobedience, but he really was in jail for a day. And then ended up paying all of the money he was supposed to. Um, and then if you scroll down a little bit, I just thought this is an awesome image. Um, this is the Battle of Buena Vista. And I just thought it was, it was beautiful and kind of shows the the kind of terrain they were fighting in in Mexico. And then my quote is from General Grant who fought in the war and said, quote, I was bitterly opposed to the measure. And to this day regard the war which resulted as one of the most unjust ever waged by a stronger against a weaker nation. So even from a lot of the generals who were and in the in the military personnel that were fighting in the war. This was unpopular for them, but in in all, there was massive westward expansion. So you can kind of look at it as both a positive and a negative.
Yeah, and and just to follow up on what you were saying, so some of the heavy fighting, we're actually gonna have some slides on some of the um, the fighting. Uh, that we have in this area right here in northern Mexico, which is kind of, you know, the power center, um. Which, you know, could challenge uh America for control of Texas, you know, what around the cities of Monterrey. Uh, I think there's a, I forget what the name of uh some of the other ones here are, but uh, and then. You know, the the amphibious assault on the port of Vera Cruz. And then just like literally fighting our way through like the, like very heavy opposition. All the way to the capital city of Mexico City and taking the capital city. Um, so we're gonna talk about how this, we're gonna talk about the like various battles in the war and then we'll talk about the treaty that ends it, but. Um, what could we have done at this point, Zach, um, in terms of like? We had taken the capital city of Mexico and forced the surrender of the entire country, what could we have done here? Um, you know, we are gonna, we are gonna take the northern half, but what we have done?
Uh, well, they could have, I mean, there's a cut, they could have just made Mexico a puppet state if they really wanted to. They could have just annexed the land they'd taken, um, it didn't seem like they really wanted it, they were kind of focused on what is now the continental US. So I guess they could have either forced Mexico to completely dissolve or form as some sort of puppet state of the US.
Yeah, we we could have taken all of Mexico over, but we chose not to. Uh, so we basically are after that territory, you know, straight west of our country. Which is going to become the western half of the United States, um, uh, but we we choose not to. And then afterwards, we'll pay them for. And then afterwards, we'll pay them for the land that we take. We're like, here, we're taking your land, but here's some money for it. Uh, Nick, go ahead. What were you gonna say?
Why did they ju- Did they just like feel bad? Is that why they just decided not to take more, or is it just they didn't need it? Or what? Like, what was the reasoning for that?
This, this goes back to that debate that's going on inside the country with people like Henry David Thoreau and others who are all, you know, uh, kind of against what we're doing. And it goes back to that quote that Zach, um, put, picked up from president, from later President Grant. But later, you know, later, one of our greatest generals during the Civil War. Um, so actually, I'll let Zach answer that and or, and I see your hand, Ethan, so I'll, I'll get to you in just a sec as well. But Zach, uh, I think Nick asked a great question. Why didn't we, um, take the rest of Mexico over? Like what, you know, what was the reasoning there?
I actually, actually don't know. Um, based on the little bit of research I've done on Mexican politics at the time, trying to unify Mexico at that point was, uh, impossible. So it may have just been more trouble than it was worth.
Yeah, and, and part of it also is that there, this is leaving a very bad taste in the mouth of a lot of people who believe that this goes against what our country, country stands for. So there is this manifest destiny, you know, people who are like, yeah, America, you know, let's go take over stuff. And people who are like, no, that is actually how we were treated when we first were colonies. That's what we rebelled against. We don't wanna treat other people the way we were treated. We wanna, we wanna be a beacon of freedom and democracy to the world. We don't want to like become this im- you know, this imposing imperialist state. Uh, Ethan, what were you gonna say?
Yeah, I was basically on the line that mainly of if we took land that, um, basically was a part of another country, that would basically be the line where most people would draw because that would be basically colonization and it would go against our core values. However, I'm guessing the compromise they went on, so well, how about we just take the land that people aren't using, Native Americans not included? Um, and just basically try to act as one piece as much as possible.
Yeah, let's split the difference kinda thing, yeah. Um, so, but, uh, taking over the rest of Mexico would have presented a lot of issues as well. Zach, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, um, another important thing from this war is it kinda set up the catastrophe that would happen in the American Civil War because all of the military personnel got extensive training here, but also the advances in technology were starting to be displayed in this war. So like the, um, the Eli Whitney, uh, interchangeable parts and the, uh, Colt, uh, revolver, like we talked about before, were both things that were used in this war. There was, it, you can kinda look at this war as a training ground for what would happen in the, um, American Civil War.
And actually, you, you brought up, like, you're, you're, you're foreshadowing something that I wanted to get to. Um, what are we going to get that is going to cause a fight between the North and the South that is going to end up leading in a lot of ways to the Civil War? What, what does the Mexican-American War give us that is going to cause the North and the South to just like basically lose it, uh, against each other?
Doesn't the Fugitive Slave Act come from this?
Well, the Fugitive Slave Act comes from the compromise that is, is going to be made. You were referring to the compromise of eighteen fifty. I didn't wanna like jump ahead and, and, and get into it too much. But, um, what are we acquiring in the Mexican-American War that both the North and the South have different visions for? Um, you know, it's
Slave territory?
It's, yeah, territory, okay? Cause not only, yeah, Texas is obviously gonna be slave state, okay? But what about all of this area out to the West? You know, like what about all of that? And of course, you know, we were gonna add that, that Oregon Territory as well. You know, so the North has a vision of the West being free. And, um, the South has this vision of extending slavery all the way across the continent, you know, to the, to the Pacific Ocean. And so those two
One of the big reasons that the, the Treaty of the Oregon, the Treaty of Oregon played a part into this is because under the, under the treaty, the Missouri Compromise, technically, the majority of the land they gained was supposed to go to slave states. I forgot to mention this. Yeah, so the, kind of the Arkansas River line, everything south of that was supposed to be slave states. And most of the area acquired was south of that line.
Right, yeah, so like the, the Mason Dixon line, yeah, is, is basically, well, it's, okay, yeah, I'm not, I'm not quite accurate on that. But right, that parallel, that's, that's right there, um, that they're, they're basically intending to stretch that all the way across the American West. So this, yeah, we double the size of our country, but we also are going to end up, this is going to end up causing the North and the South to just, just completely lose it with each other and it's gonna end up causing the Civil War. So, uh, excellent job, uh, Zach. Um, uh, any other questions or comments on the beginning of the Mexican-American War? All right, so that takes us actually to what Zach was just referring to, um, which is the Oregon Treaty of eighteen forty-six. Um, because, you know, James Polk does not wanna have two enemies at the same time. We don't wanna fight Mexico and Britain. So before we really get into it with Mexico, um, uh, our Ambassador Richard Packenham and our Secretary of State James Buchanan, uh, make note of him, uh, are going to negotiate this, uh, border. And fifty-four forty was actually the southern, if you remember from the Monroe Doctrine, when we talked about the Monroe Doctrine, we actually had negotiated with Russia as that being the, the southernmost kind of tip of Russian America. Um, and, uh, and so, uh, we basically, uh, negotiated with Britain and we said, okay, instead of going all the way up to fifty-four forty, which is kind of like the southern end of those little islands that stretch off of Alaska there, let's just basically extend the forty-ninth parallel all the way across to the ocean. And Britain was cool with that. And so, um, uh, we, we basically negotiate this treaty. And, um, uh, it actually sets up the longest undefended border in the world. Uh, I mean, since nine eleven, we have put some, uh, defenses there. Uh, but Canada and the United States have had a relatively friendly relationship, um, uh, you know, since we've tried to take them over twice. And, uh, basically, uh, you know, that, that border is kind of, uh, finalized in this treaty. So that's the Oregon Treaty of eighteen forty-six. And that takes us to, um, the story of California. Okay, so when we talked about the mountain men, um, uh, Brady, uh, was referring to, uh, uh, John Fremont, um, who actually, one of the mountain men was like his, basically his Pathfinder. And they actually called him, they called John C. Fremont, the Great Pathfinder, because he's kind of this guy who has political ambitions. He's a, he's a military, uh, he, he has some military experience as well. And, um, he leads, uh, a force of three hundred men known as the California Battalion across the Sierra Nevada Mountains. And they attack the Mexican city of Santa Barbara, um, while this, the, the Mexican-American War is kind of getting started. And so he actually ends up taking Los Angeles as well and becomes the de facto leader of an independent little republic known as the Bear Flag Republic. Um, and so he is, he kind of becomes, um, kind of this, this, for a very brief time, uh, this, this little independent republic's leader. Uh, and then, um, of course, you know, you have Kearney coming across, uh, and, um, he, he conquers San Diego, um, and, uh, and then Fremont basically had been named governor of the new territory by the people there, but then Kearney refused to, um, uh, uh, recognize that. And, um, uh, and Fremont refused to give up his office. Uh, so there was like a little squabble over there as to who was going to be the governor of California Territory. Or, but, um, Fremont comes to national prominence at this time. And one of the big things about Fremont is he is a huge abolitionist. He is a huge anti-slavery person. So his vision for California is for California to be free, free territory. Um, so people who want the West to be free are going to kind of gravitate towards Fremont, who of course has political ambitions. Uh, and so we'll, we'll be talking more about him in a little while. Now, um, it is interesting to note that, um, during this time, when we're all, you know, about acquiring territory and, and kind of showing our military might, uh, that our first pacifist society is, um, is born and actually becomes kind of a focal point for the, uh, resistance to the Mexican-American War within our country. Um, so the American Peace Society had been founded actually back in eighteen twenty-eight by William Ladd. Uh, and it generally opposed all wars, um, kind of, you know, was the first to propose this idea of a quote, "Congress of Nations." Um, now this is actually a really important idea. Yeah, Zach, what were you gonna say?
So this is kinda unrelated, but I just thought of it and I was wondering if I could change my slide.
Oh, yeah?
Uh, can I change my slide to, uh, Dr. Elizabeth Blackwell?
Absolutely. Um, what, what was your slide before that? Communism, you're gonna do communism. Alright, so, alright, so Dr. Blackwell, okay. But, um, what were, did you have a question as well, or?
No, that, I, I just wanted to make sure I got that out of the way.
You're gonna leave me alone on communism?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Boyer, come on, man.
We, we had such a great debate in, uh, in Sixth Block on, um, uh, on, uh, commu- on socialism, I mean.
Oh, yeah, yeah, get ready to talk about, uh, a whole lot of bourgeoisie and proletariat. This is, is gonna be entertaining.
We're gonna have the, uh, the mother of all debates, uh, on communism. Well, here, alright, here we go, Zach. Alright, I found it. Alright, alright, I got you down, Zach. Uh, alright, so anyway, um, uh, basically, um, the leader of the opposition to, uh, the Mexican-American War was a guy by the name of Benjamin Franklin Trueblood. Um, he was a Quaker and, uh, basically kind of built upon Ladd's ideas. But that, that idea that we mentioned just a minute ago, the Congress of Nations, what is that? What, what am I talking about? This is actually a really important idea, which is going to actually be proposed later by an American president. But the Okay, so give me like a, a more in-depth version of what you were just saying. What, what are we talking about here?
So like, there's a general unification of the world leaders where they agree to like peace and a, a general, like, international government.
Okay, an international government or an international, like, i- it, does this international group actually control things in the world?
It's like an international, like, confederation of, like, each government is its own entity, but they kinda come together and talk, like, I guess, like NATO would be.
Okay, that, you, you, you just said it, but, uh, Ethan, what were you gonna say?
Yeah, base, basically a Congress of Nations would be base, a bunch of countries agree with each other on like certain core values that basically, and generally not have war. And it's not like they have a government, it's just they kinda all agree to do the same thing when it, when something arises.
Okay.
Basically like, uh, United Nations.
Boom, boom, yes, okay, so, um, this is a huge, really, really important idea because as the world gets like more technologically, you know, advanced and as warfare gets more technologically advanced and as you have these powers which have empires that stretch around the globe, eventually, we're gonna come to two massive world wars. And after the first one, an American president is going to propose that the way to stop us from killing each other and from like destroying the planet is to have a international forum, a place where all the countries of the world can come and air their grievances and, and talk things out before we fight them out. Um, and, uh, of course, what is that first iteration? Who is that first president? Does anybody know off the top of their head? Um, but
Wilson?
Is Wilson, very good. And what is the, what is his, um, first attempt at this called?
The League of Nations?
The League of Nations, okay. Now, the, after World War Two, we are going to revive that idea and make it much stronger because, you know, like, we're like, okay, we never wanna go through that again. And yes, we need to give this international forum some real power, uh, to prevent, you know, little, little sparks and, and wacko dictators from like take, trying to like take over the world. But, um, that is, is, has the United Nations effectively helped keep the world peaceful since World War Two? Go ahead.
Sort of.
Yeah, yeah, sort of, okay. And Ethan, what were you gonna say?
I think for the most, for the most part, yes, it has stopped quite a lot of conflicts. Of course, you're gonna have one or two.
Yeah, you're gonna have, you're gonna, you're gonna have your various wars.
Basically, among those who have agreed to be a part of the United Nations, it has drastically reduced.
Well, yeah, have we had World War Three?
No.
No.
It's been like almost seventy, eighty years.
Yeah, seventy, it's seventy-five years since the end of World War Two is twenty-twenty. It's the seventy-fifth anniversary. Um, and, uh, it is, I mean, is that right? Forty-five to twenty, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm, yeah, I think that's right. But anyway, um, you know, it, this is a really important idea, like a really important, uh, and, and so, because it's gonna have such a huge influence later. Yeah, Autumn, what were you gonna say?
How impactful was this, like, at the time? Like, how many people did it reach?
Okay, well, essentially, Mr. Uh, Trueblood and Mr. Ladd were able to kind of get a bunch of kind of, um, you know, you, you're Henry David Thoreau's, you're, you're people who have this conscientious objection to America being a, just another imperialist power, cause there are a lot of imperialist powers in the world. And really, it's, it's whatever you can take, you take it by force, you know? That's the law, uh, internationally, like whoever's strongest, they just take what they want. Um, and, uh, so these guys are, are, are basically saying, that's not how we should operate. We should all agree on a set of ground rules, that this is how nations should, should interact with each other. So, uh, at the time, it's very small and the influence, so, so, so to answer your question, Autumn, um, the overwhelming majority of people in America are, agree with manifest destiny. Um, there's a small group that opposes it, uh, there, but this idea that they create, uh, especially the one, you know, that William Ladd, uh, proposed, this Congress of Nations, is going to end up giving us kind of that solution that we need later when we are looking to stabilize the world. When, you know, the strong rule and, and you just go and you take what you want by force, that has led to two world wars and we're like, my God, we're gonna destroy each other. We're gonna, you know, like humanity's not gonna survive if we don't figure out how to, you know, live together. And so, um, that kind of leads to, uh, you know, that, those later ideas. So it's kind of interesting. Everybody always gives Wilson all the credit, but you have to look further back and in, in history to find the original proposer of this idea, who is Mr. Ladd. Uh, and of course, it is interesting that the Quakers are involved because they are, they have been ever since their founding, very, very pacifist. So, um, yeah, just, just a very interesting kind of aside there. Um, and that takes us to one of the great battles of the Mexican-American War. Yeah, go ahead, Nick.
Is that society still around today? Was there like a version that kind of like was modernized?
Yeah, the American Peace Institute actually sponsors a, um, an essay contest. And I've actually had my, my students enter it. Uh, I had one of my students win, um, that, this was back when I was a teacher in Iowa, like, uh, this was, gosh, this is over a decade ago. But I had one of my students win, like, the essay, the top essay in Iowa. Like, they have, this, this is the United States Institute of Peace, and you can look it up, they have a website and everything. And, um, like, they sponsor this essay contest every year about like world peace and how to achieve it, and they have a topic every year. And then the, they have this essay contest, people write essays and then they compete for like the top essay in their state. And then the top essays from all the fifty states compete for the, 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 the national prize. And if you, if you win the national prize, you get to go to Washington DC and meet all of these really important people. It's, it's actually connected in a lot of ways to the State Department. Um, and they, there's a lot of like former secretaries of state and, and diplomats and, and whatnot that are all part of it. But yeah, it's still around, um, and, uh, it, it's, it's actually very influential now. So excellent question. Um, alright, so, uh, back to the Mexican-American War. This guy right here, as, as Zach mentioned earlier, is going to become very influential. Um, because, uh, he ends up winning a battle where the odds are stacked against him. So after, um, he wins the Battle of Monterrey in northern Mexico, um, our main general at the time, General Winfield Scott, is planning on doing that, that amphibious assault down south and to take Mexico City, which we're gonna talk about in a little bit. And, um, he says, okay, And um he says, okay, send the bulk of your army to the south, but you stay up north and hold that northern area. So um General Taylor only had five thousand troops. He sent the rest of his troops down south to kind of back up Winfield Scott as he attacked Mexico City. And Santa Anna, who Zach mentioned, uh had intercepted a letter stating that Taylor only had, you know, this small number of men. And so he raised an army of twenty thousand men from San Luis Potosi. Uh that was the name of the other city I was trying to remember. And uh basically went to find uh Zachary Taylor and um Taylor, realizing he was outnumbered, retreated into a mountain pass. So it's kind of a bottleneck. Um and so like that that big kind of um uh picture that Zach showed of the of the um of the mountains because there's like, you know, a mountainous region up in the northern parts of Mexico on both sides, actually. And um Santa Anna, of course, met him at this mountain pass. So it's kind of almost like a modern day version of the Battle of Thermopylae. You know, where you have the three hundred Spartans standing against the might of this massive Persian army and they won't let him through the pass. And so Taylor's forces held out against this brutal assault of twenty thousand men versus five thousand, you know, and um he is able to hold uh the pass and and uh because it's a bottleneck, um the Mexican army was unable to break through. And so, of course, just like what happened with uh Andrew Jackson, this is going to make Zachary Taylor into an American hero. Like he is going to become like a big deal. Uh and of course, whenever a general becomes really popular, what's the what what are people thinking about him in the future uh as as a possibility? Anyone?
President.
Yes, he makes great uh successful generals make great presidential material. Um and so that basically is uh the Battle of Buena Vista and the rise of Zachary Taylor to national prominence. Um now, we gotta go down to the battle, um the the series of battles that that leads all the way to the uh into Mexico City. By the way, if you if you know the Marine uh Corps hymn, you know, it's to the halls of Montezuma. Uh that's what they're referring to right here is, you know, going to Mexico City. Um but uh this is uh the first major amphibious assault in US military history. So the Marine Corps is actually going to take a very large role in this. They're the ones who assault the beaches and and, you know, are the are the tip of the spear when it comes to establishing a beachhead on on a enemy soil. But he is actually uh successfully able to take the city of Veracruz with nine thousand men and then conducts this grueling campaign towards the capital of Mexico. So we're right down in the very heart of Mexico um fighting very sizable armies. There are major, I mean, we could talk, we could go into a lot of detail here, but uh major engagements include the Battle of Cerro Gordo, the Battle of Churubosco, uh the ba- and the Battle of Chapultepec. Um and in this battle, uh this has kind of gone down in Mexican history as like one of their great stories. Um the Mexican Military Academy um had mostly been abandoned, but there were like just a couple of cadets who were still there and it was like up on the hill. And uh there were six of them who decided that they were gonna defend their school. And they died defending this school. They called uh they're they were called in Mexico Los Niños Heroes uh afterwards for their brave sacrifice. This is a little uh kind of a poster of them. Uh but um that basically is one is like one of the big, big battles that kind of decides, you know, whether or not we're going to be able to get to Mexico City and and us winning that battle um basically means that the Mexican capital is open to being taken. Uh and so, once we take the capital, General Scott, who uh again is is kind of going to use his success here to become the leader of the United States military, uh our top general. Uh he basically uh is is going to kind of plant the American flag uh in Mexico City. He they replace uh um a Mexican flag with an American flag. And then the negotiations begin and um uh Nicholas Trist, who was our ambassador to Mexico, actually negotiated and signed uh the treaty, which became known as the Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo. And in this treaty, um you know, and and Trist, by the way, had, there's like some politics there. Trist had been told to step aside by Polk, you know, Polk wanted some, one of his uh more trusted advisors to negotiate this, but didn't do it. And anyway, it it this becomes the treaty. But the entire northern half of Mexico is ceded to the United States in what is known as the Mexican Session. And of course, Texas is also recognized as being a part of our country in return for a payment of fifteen million dollars. So if you don't count Texas, this red area up here is going to become, is the area known as the Mexican Session, which of course includes the entire state of California, Nevada, Utah, uh Arizona and parts of um Colorado and New Mexico. And um the southern border of Texas is recognized as the Rio Grande and um uh people who were living in mech- in uh this area in the Mexican Session were given a choice. They could either immigrate to Mexico or they could um become American citizens automatically. Yes, Zachary.
Is that is that Gadsden purchase after the same Gadsden as the flag is?
Uh the same Gadsden as the flag.
Don't tread on me flag is the Gadsden flag. Is that the same Gadsden?
I don't know if that family is is the same family, uh if he's descended from that family. There's a very strong possibility he is. Uh but I don't, I don't know the history of the Gadsden family well enough to know. The the Gadsden purchase is named for um the guy that goes down and negotiates that purchase. It's actually part of like a effort to placate the South by saying, hey, when we build a railroad across the country, we're gonna build it through the southern areas instead of through the northern areas. So you Southerners are gonna get kind of the benefit of that. And in order to build that railroad, we had to purchase some territory from Mexico in order to do it. It actually, we end up spending more money for this little slice of land here than we do for all of this land up here. But of course, we didn't have to pay him any money at all. I don't know, does that answer your question?
Close enough.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, you'd have to look up the history of that family. Uh that is beyond my knowledge. Nick, you still have your hand up? Did you just forget or did you have another question? You just forgot. Alright, uh Ethan, go ahead. What were you gonna say?
Oh, yeah, uh when you're talking about the Rio Grande, I just remembered like one small tidbit. I think it's like over the years, the course of the Rio Grande River changed a bit and that caused like a border dispute once, I think, because then they questioned should the border be always on the Rio Grande and be fluid with it or should it just be like how it originally was? And I think one town in the US was given to Mexico as a result of that.
Right, yeah, the minutia of diplomacy, yes. Um so, yeah, yeah. I, yeah, I I remember that, but um yeah, you are absolutely correct on that. Um Zach, did you have anything else or did you just have your hand up still? Do you wanna say?
Put it down.
Okay, no problem. Alright, so that is the Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo, which officially uh adds all of this territory to the United States, although, you know, we could have taken all of Mexico and we chose not to. So it's kind of funny. Um we try to take Canada twice and fail. And we have the opportunity to take all of Mexico and we don't do it. Uh so just, you know, kind of funny when you look at it big picture wise. Alright. So that takes us to the little like grenade that's gonna get thrown in to the acquiring of this territory, which is going to kick off this big dispute, okay? So this is just like the Tolmange Amendment um to uh Missouri becoming, you know, a a state, which you may remember when we talked about the Missouri Compromise, the Tolmange Amendment was this amendment which said that slavery would eventually be banned in the state of Missouri, which caused the Southerners to just lose their minds. Well, um a uh congressman who has an interesting name, Jacob Brinkerhoff, basically uh came up with an amendment that would outlaw slavery in any and all territories uh acquired by the United States in the Mexican American war. And of course, Mr. Brinkerhoff is from Pennsylvania. Uh Pennsylvania is home to the Quakers, which are a hotbed for abolitionism. And um he actually uh ends up having his fellow um congressman, uh David Wilmot, actually propose this amendment. So Brinkerhoff is the one who comes up with it, but Wilmot is the one who proposes it uh in Congress, which is why it bears his name. So this becomes known as the Wilmot Proviso, uh which would basically outlaw all of the Mexican American territory session getting uh slavery in their territory. Yeah, Olivia, go ahead.
Um I just wanna know why Jacob came up with it. Like, I understand why, but it just kind of sounds like he just thought of it and then made an amendment out of it. Yeah, like, what was his reason why?
Oh, gosh, you know, again, getting kind of into the weeds of history here, I'm trying to remember what his reason was for not proposing it himself. Maybe he, maybe he felt like there would, the Brinkerhoff Pro- Proviso would just be like really odd sounding. I don't know. Uh I honestly, I don't remember. Um that was one of those uh little minutia of history that's uh kind of, I knew it at one point, but it kind of escaped me. But uh, yeah, for whatever reason, he decided to have uh his friend David Wilmot. It might have been if I'm, if it's if sort of remembering uh that it was like had something to do with Wilmot being better at at speaking. Like, he felt like Wilmot would speak better in favor of it, like he would gain more favor in the House if if Wilmot made the the speech in favor of it, because when you propose something, you have to get up and you have to speak on its behalf. Uh that may be why, but I I uh my memory's a little fuzzy, so that might not be it. Uh Ethan, what were you gonna say?
Honestly, in my opinion of the time, I would be terrified if I had to give this to Congress because you know what the response from the southern states would be.
Yeah, but remember the
Like a huge claim to make and basically would be sending a middle finger to them.
Yeah, this is a, this is a political grenade, okay? I mean, this is like, you know, you're gonna get like a huge reaction from it. But there are some people in the North who just don't care because they see slavery as such a moral evil, that they're like, you know what? Fine, who cares, you know?
Basically like the king point of where uh negotiations start to basically fall apart.
Yeah, I mean, right here, you can see kind of the foreshadowing of what is to come from the the territory that we're acquiring. So we're getting all this territory, but this territory is going to tear the country apart because we can't decide whether it be slave or be free. Scott, what were you gonna say?
Would the North still be like, screw the South, we don't need slavery, if they knew it was gonna cause a big war?
Well, you'll see, you'll see, because there are gonna be people in the North who are gonna backpedal, like, then they're gonna be like, oh, wait a minute, let's, you know, let's give the South, you know, this, let's give the South that. So you've got a combination, it's actually an excellent question. You've got a combination of people in the North. Um some people feel like the Union is more, is is worth more to preserve the Union. And other people feel like, no, ending slavery is worth whatever it costs. And of course, that's the abolitionist wing within the North. Which really is gonna drive, you know, this eventually, this division, this sectionalism to eventually, you know, cause uh in a rift between the North and the South, which will lead to the Civil War, so. So this is the beginning of that, the Wilmot Proviso. And of course, um it it is uh not passed um by Congress. Uh but it does kind of serve as a rallying point for abolitionists who um form a new party, okay? Called the Free Soil Party. So the Free Soil Party and the and the Liberty Party are often confused with each other. The Liberty Party is all about, hey, we want slavery to be abolished, but we don't wanna give African Americans equal rights. The Free Soil Party, does anybody wanna guess, just by the name Free Soil? What would, what would the Free Soil's big issue be? Uh Ethan, go ahead.
I think their big issue would probably be, you know, any newly acquired territory should not have slavery.
Yeah, right. E- essentially, all new territory is going to be free. And of course, you already had the great pathfinder John C. Fremont out in California, establishing California's bare flag republic as a free republic where no slavery was allowed, so um you 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 have that tension already. Alright, this uh leads us to uh one of the great women who uh is is very influential as a transcendentalist. We mentioned her earlier. Uh but she I would, she deserves kind of her own analysis in terms of like her contribution to uh American literature. Um and so uh Sarah Margaret Fuller uh is a highly intelligent uh young lady who basically um uh ends up getting a rigorous education, which is, you know, most women who are highly intelligent are at a disadvantage when it comes to debating men or getting involved in a man's world because they don't have the background, they don't have the education. So they just, they they can't win debates, they can't look like they know what they're talking about because they don't have it. But one of the few people who does get that uh at this time is 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 uh Sarah Margaret Fuller, who just goes by her middle name Margaret. Uh because her father, Timothy Fuller, who was a congressman uh in the House of Representatives from Massachusetts, basically felt like you know, his daughter deserved an education. And so she basically is one of the early, early pioneers for women's rights uh in the United States. Um as a matter of fact, most people kind of look at, you know, Elizabeth Stady, uh Elizabeth Katie Stanton and um uh Susan B. Anthony is is what is some of the ear- early great pioneers. But really, the lady who predates them as as one of the great pioneers for women's rights is Margaret Fuller. Um she um uh basically uh kind of starts a group known as Conversations while she is a teacher and then becomes a writer for Ralph Waldo Emerson's uh Transcendentalist Magazine Dial. Uh and then becomes a reporter for Horace Greeley, who we're gonna talk about in a little while. He's this rather liberal, rather odd newspaper editor who will eventually become a presidential candidate. Hit for his paper, the New York Tribune. But in eighteen forty-six, she publishes Woman in the Nineteenth Century, which is considered the first major feminist work in our country's history. And in this, she is the first to argue in print that women and men should be considered equal in marriage and in all other um institutions and that girls deserved an education alongside boys. Yes, Nathan?
So I know like a lot of like early um feminists were like mainly, some of them were really for like only white women getting rights. Was she one of those or did she believe like all people deserved equal rights?
Um as far as her stance on abolition, if I remember correctly, and this again is is kind of in the borderline fuzzy areas of my memory, um if I remember correctly, she is also an abolitionist. Um but she felt like she, if she, if she focused on too many things at once, that her message would be diluted. So she decided to focus on women's rights because she didn't wanna fight the abolitionist fight too, you know what I'm saying? Like i- i- if you, if you make too many enemies for yourself, you can't ever accomplish the original goal you had. So you, so she decided to focus just on feminism, but in her personal belief, she is also an abolitionist, if I remember correctly. I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure that's right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so um so, yeah, like some of, you're gonna see this, and actually, you 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 ask an excellent question because some of the people who are great abolitionists are also great, you know, uh kind of feminists. There there are people who believe in inequality between men and women, William Lloyd Garrison being a great example of that. Um but you, if you want to get enough political allies on your side to win it the, you know, and to actually get advances for your, for the particular group that you care about, you can't fight all of the battles at once, so to speak. So um but that is Margaret Fuller. Uh again, she doesn't, she does not get her due uh in terms of like being recognized as is pretty much the first great women's rights leader in American history. The later, the later more prominent ones always seem to to get the spotlight. Alright, and that takes us to the next great transcendentalist writer who Zach talked about, Henry David Thoreau. And of course, we are, we do talk about Henry David Thoreau at this time in history because of his uh anti uh war stance, becoming, he becomes one of the most prominent uh people in America against the Mexican American war. Um but um he is a gifted writer. I mean, it's, it there is no two ways about it. It really is, you know, he he's up there with Emerson. He's he's a, he's a brilliant writer. And um he basically um kind of uh wrote a number of essays and actually tried to write a book, um but uh, you know, published it before it was totally ready to be published. Yeah, Nathan, what were you Um, but uh, you know, published it before it was totally ready to be published. Yeah, Nathan, what were you gonna say?
I did that by accident, sorry.
Oh, no problem. Uh, so um, essentially, his, his most notable early uh achievement in terms of writing is. Or it it has to do with politics, okay, and it's on the duty of civil disobedience. Why do we think so much of this? Like, why do we keep pointing back to this in history? We're looking at something that is going to be a trend, although Zach kind of mentioned that he's only in jail for a day. Um, uh, so his civil disobedience doesn't come with a lot of great personal cost. All he does is refuse to pay taxes, go to jail for it, and then gets bailed out by his aunt. But um, he writes this eloquent defense of why he did it. Why is this so important, like, later on trend-wise? Like, who is going to pick up this torch later? Um, and use civil disobedience to create great societal change?
I know a lot of people are probably gonna say MLK, but didn't Gandhi, like, did Gandhi take any of this when he was doing his?
Yes, so so excellent, you you hit both of them, actually, yes. So Gandhi is going to be the first, and of course, Gandhi is more world history. But uh, MLK, uh Martin Luther King is going to uh study Gandhi while he is in seminary at Crozier Seminary. And um, a- and of course, Thoreau as well. So Thoreau's eloquent defense of civil disobedience. Is what is really gonna put him on the map as a writer um first. Now, just before we leave this topic, because this is such an important trend later in our history, what is civil disobedience? What is it? In in essence, what what is he arguing for here?
Peacefully not doing what the government tells you to do.
Yeah, when you don't do what the government tells you to do, what are you essentially doing? You're breaking a what?
Law.
You're breaking the law. When you break the law, what's the consequence of breaking the law?
You get punished.
Yeah, you 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 get punished, which is either fines or jail, okay? Um, and what is the argument here when it comes to, when the government comes to punish you? What should you do? Do you, do you resist the police as they are attempting to enforce this punishment amon- upon you or not? When it, because this, cuz we we talked about the disobedience part, but we're talking about civil disobedience. So, do you resist when the, when the police come to punish you for essentially personally nullifying the law yourself? Kenzie, what were you gonna say?
Well, thinking about what you said about being civil, I guess they would just let them, but. Be known in their mind that they thought to do what they think was right.
Right, so essentially, you're saying, I'm going to just let you arrest me, I'm going to take the punishment, uh, and I'm, I'm going to be a martyr. Essentially, for whatever cause this is. And Nick, what were you gonna add?
You literally just stole my point. I was gonna say, um, he's basically just a martyr for his cause, just kind of. Uh, representing that, oh, hey, I don't agree with this and I'll refuse to do it, but like, I'm still not going to be violent or. Uh, fight back against it, I'm going to let it happen, but just kind of project my image and let the people decide how they feel about it.
Yeah, so like, what, what, like, what do, what value does it have to be a martyr? Like, like, when you, when you civilly disobey, and there's a law on the books, which you feel like is an unjust law, and you, and you disobey it. You got thrown in jail for it, uh, and you become a martyr. Nick, what what is the value of of like? Um, like, how does that help the cause?
It can inspire people, it kind of reunites them around, like rallies them around a certain person to just kind of push the movement forward, I guess.
Yeah, and then what happens to that law eventually? Because laws are decided upon by our representatives, like, we can put pressure on our representatives in a democracy. To write laws the way we want them to write them. If enough people see a law is unjust, what what happens to that law?
Uh, can get um removed, I guess.
Yeah, it can get changed, they can write a new law that that changes it. So, um, yeah, so, but it it it's really. Thoreau's eloquence that is is kind of like the key here. And Autumn, what were you gonna say?
I was just gonna ask, it's like what Rosa Parks did, is that kind of an example of that?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, because the she went, she, you know, she knew that she was gonna get arrested. And she just refused to give up her seat, she just was like, no, I'm not gonna go to the back of the bus. And so it's a small, simple act. And of course, I don't think she, she thought, I will be, you know, famous, like, people will be talking about me, you know, decades and decades later. Uh, still for this one small act, uh, but she just happened to be in the right place at the right time and was that that spark that started something. So, yeah, uh, and and that's an excellent example of how civil disobedience can eventually lead to great change. Uh, but he, the 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 direct quote from Thoreau is that he quote, didn't want, he he had a duty to resist the state if it would quote. Cause him to be an agent of injustice to another human being. So another reason that Thoreau is so important is because he is a guy who argues on behalf of something known as human rights. Which is something that we're, is starting to become like a concept, but really is going to become important when we get to things like World War Two. And the Holocaust and and where we, we have to say, hey, there are certain limits, even in the middle of war. And certain things that as a, as a human race, we're gonna say are just not okay. Uh, Ethan, what were you gonna say?
It just popped in my mind, but I think, isn't that also like another civil di- disobedience, I think is what a lot of people is like libertarian. Specifically, you know, it's like, ah, the government can't tell me what to do, I'm gonna own this like AR in my, in the woods or something like that. That's where the modern equivalent.
I'm, I'm a, I'm a sovereign citizen. Have you ever watched one of those shows, like where the cops pull somebody over and the person's like. I'm a sovereign citizen and I don't have to pay the constitution originally said, I do not have to pay taxes, you know, and stuff like that. Um, yeah, I mean, those are some of your, your more like, kind of wacky examples, I guess, of the same concept, but yes. It it, you know, you have.
Mainly, it continues a movement of basically, the government can't tell me what to do.
Well, and and you're justifying it, though, you're saying it's because it's not in the constitution. So you know how we talked about the state of South Carolina saying, hey? This is unconstitutional, we're gonna nullify this, right? Think of this almost in the same way as a personal nullification, you're gonna be like, I ha- I guess I am such an expert on constitutional law. That I am personally gonna nullify this law. I am not going to, I'm not gonna follow this law, of course.
It's basically, you gotta have something to back it up if you're gonna disobey it.
Right, and and here's the thing, um, Henry David Thoreau is actually most well-known for a a book. About the most boring possible subject. He is gonna go and spend a year sitting in the woods. And contemplating life and writing about it. And you're like, oh my gosh, this must, this is gonna be a snooze fest. Like, he's gonna, he's gonna wake up in the morning, he's gonna go out, he's gonna sit there in front of this pond, and he's gonna write, okay? But Walden, or Life in the Woods, which was published in eighteen fifty-four, actually becomes one of the most popular books in the country. Um, does anybody wanna guess why? Like, how does he make the contemplation? Yes, it is transcendentalist in nature, okay, uh, it is kind of pushing back against Christianity to a certain extent, uh, et cetera. But why is that going to be so popular in the country? Especially among people who were opposed to the Mexican-American war. Max, uh, and Ethan, I see your hand, but I didn't know if it was left up from before or if you wanted to say something. It was left, okay.
Um, I've still got something.
All right.
Um, you just want me to answer?
Well, I was gonna let Max go and then I'll let you go.
Yeah, I'll let Max go first.
All right, go ahead, Max, what were you gonna say?
Um, a lot of people up north especially don't live in the woods. And they don't really know what's going on when you're sitting in the woods for a year. So they might be interested in this, they might be interested in figuring out what life in the wood is like. And like you said, oppose Mexican-American war, that's, you know, probably the north-ish people, so.
Yes, okay, so you're feeling like it's just because people are fascinated with the whole idea of just, of just like. Living in the woods, like, it's like nowadays, today's like, you know, what if I just gave up my super high-powered job? And I just went out and and got one of those tiny houses and lived in a tiny house kind of thing. Um, Kenzie, what were you gonna say?
Oh, I was just gonna say, people may have just been interested in it, because it was a break from what was happening, I guess.
Okay, all right, those are both good guesses. Ethan, what were you gonna say?
My guess was be, would be, it's like around this time, industry is really ki- is really kicking off in the. American north, and so I think it would actually have to deal with, like, yeah, my granddad sort of lived like this out in the woods. And now I'm just working in a factory, it's sort of reflecting on more American past and. How those people live through those conditions and basically a romanticized view of nature and all the connection to nature. And how you can just don't have to worry about the stress of like a bustling city.
Okay, you hit on a part of it, actually, uh, which is this whole romanticized view of nature as a way to commune with God. As a way, or like, but not God as the Christian God, but more the God that is in everything, so to speak, the spirit of the universe or whatever. That is more the transcendentalist view of God. But yeah, it's kind of like that, but here's what makes it popular. In that, he cleverly skewers people who have these big nationalist like ambitions. You know, like, it's like, all the people who were in favor of the Mexican-American war and who made these arguments about manifest destiny and everything. He, uh, he cleverly kind of in his contemplations on nature, makes them look like buffoons. So it is, it in a lot of ways, the reason why Walden is so popular, especially with the people who oppose the war. Is because he is cleverly commenting on politics, but backhandedly. But like, while he's talking about nature. So like, when you, when you listen to his little kind of, um. You know, his reflections on, you know, the pond and nature and and just the 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 kind of the state of his mind while he's talking. You, you get these little political digs he's throwing in against the other side, and people just ate it up, they loved it. Uh, yeah. Olivia, what were you gonna say?
I'm not sure if you would know this or not, but like, was he one of those people where if someone else had like a differing opinion than him? He would try to sway them in that way by saying like, one of his quotes or something like that, I can just see him doing that, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, he's, uh, like, he, he actually got mad at Ralph Wal- Waldo Emerson, cuz Ralph Waldo Emerson saw some of his writing. And was like, oh, you should publish this, this is great, this is good stuff. And um, he published it, but it, like, it was like. Premature, like, he should have, he should have edited it more, he should have waited. And so even though Ralph Waldo Emerson is like his mentor. He's such a, I don't know, um, he's, he's such a prima donna in some ways, that he's like. You know, you ruined my literary career, you know, blah, blah, blah. And so, um, yeah, he's kind of an interesting guy in a lot of ways. Um, you know, y- you can romanticize him and think, oh, this man is so wise, so, so, you know, he, he's kind of this icon. Uh, of of this, this kind of, you know, anti-imperialist, you know, view of things. But in in this transcendentalist, he's kind of like an icon of the left, I guess you could say at the time, but. In some ways, he's kind of got a thin skin and and does, you know, so I don't know if that answers your question, but um.
It does, it does. I was just reading some of his quotes and it's like, some of them are really good and then some of them just seem kinda. Snobby, I guess, like, he's obsessed with the woods in some of these.
Yeah, and he's obsessed with like his image in front of other people, like, he's pretentious, okay? So, yes, he's a, to a bit, to a certain extent, he plays up to this, this, this kind of image that he creates for himself. Uh, and he's very protective of it, yeah. So some people don't like him as a result of that. Uh, but yeah, excellent, excellent. Um, uh, you know, additional insight there into Henry David Thoreau. So, just so you remember, this guy is really important for a number of reasons. People trace civil disobedience back to him. Even though, as Zach mentioned, um, he is not, he doesn't really suffer for his, his refusal to pay taxes very much. Um, but, you know, he does have the courage to break the law and and kind of justify it in this way. So, anyway, very interesting guy. Um, and uh, you know, uh, has a huge influence in many ways. All right. That takes us to another kind of experimental left leaning uh group. Um, the Transcendental Club uh announced to its members, um. Uh, that, and 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 actually, George Ripley was the guy who who announced this, that he was going to create a, another commune, okay? The reason that this one was going to be different from uh the New Harmony Commune that we talked about before was it's going to only be transcendentalists. So the last time around, the problem was, when you tried to create this, this kind of, this, this, you know, this new vision of how humans could interact. And live with each other, this com- commune type state, this socialist type state. You had these, you know, never-do-wells, these, these, these bad people who came in and ruined it. So he's like, this time, we're gonna avoid all that, by we're gonna, by creating a commune only for. People who are 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 good leftists and good kind of, you know, um, I don't know if I'm saying that right, but good transcendentalists. But anyway, people who are going to have like a good intention when they come in. And anyway, um, there is all these like, you know, kind of um, business ventures that were a part of this, uh, they were gonna sell things. So Brook Farm Commune uh includes greenhouses, craft shop shops, et cetera, and a number of famous. Uh, authors and transcendentalists become a part of this. So Nathaniel Hawthorne, who we talked about, who who liked to criticize Puritanism. Through his novels, Margaret Fuller, who we talked about, were were part of this. Um. And really, this is an attempt to bring Charles Fourier's vision, his socialist vision to life, okay? So, um, the phalanxes, this is actually going to, uh, you know, try to put that into practice. So, um, the large communal house that is built is known as the Philanostry. It was begun in eighteen forty-four, but there's a fire and it burns down before its completion in eighteen forty-six. And then there are various people ran into financial issues and left, and the commune kind of died. So there is this debate as to whether the Brook Farm Commune could have worked if it hadn't been for these, these unfortunate accidents. Which basically left it in a financial, you know, state of disarray. Um, you know, could a group of people who are all committed to these, these more, you know. Uh, socialist ideals, could they have created a successful commune or not? Um, and Scott, what were you gonna say?
How did the thing burn down?
It was an accident, most likely. I mean, you know, you could suspect that somebody, you know, was like, didn't want this to see this succeed and and may have started the fire on purpose. But um, from the sources I've read, it, like, everybody pretty much considers it to be an accident, which, I mean, is not terribly uncommon at the time. Um, but uh, but yeah, I mean, you could take the alternate view if you wanted. Um, I could see somebody wanting to, you know, sabotage this, uh, is possible. All right, that takes us to another great social reformer, uh, by the name of Dorothea Dix. Um, and uh, she's important, you do need to know her, um, because it all has to do with what do we do with insane people? So, we talked about this before with with asylums, uh, but basically, uh, she um. Goes and looks at the um, the, the insane asylums in Massachusetts. And makes a fiery report to the state legislature in Boston, that mental patients were being treated in the most cruel and inhumane ways. Um, saying that they were quote confined within this Commonwealth in cages, stalls, pens, you know. Chained, naked, beaten with rods, lashed into obedience, you know, so that's a direct quote from her report. And so, um, that basically cre- created such a furor that, um, the state legislature uh established the first. State mental hospital, Harrisburg State Hospital uh in Pennsylvania. And uh, mental patients were treated with more respect, they weren't given these experimental treatments. Um, that, yeah, obviously, many of them are were um, not effective. And uh, so this is an effort to reform. Now, of course, uh, that, that, those reforms would eventually kind of fall into. Uh, you know, there would be continued issues, which then would later be reformed again by Nellie Bly. But uh, Dorothea Dix, big, big, uh, you know, reformer in terms of how the mentally, um. You know, people who have mental deficiencies are 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 treated. And of course, Harrisburg State Hospital is the first mental institution in the country. Um. We also have um, some reform when it comes to prisons at this time. Uh, and uh, the 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 thinking is, you know, do we want to just punish people? Or do we want to reform them and turn them into um members of society who can actually like come back into society someday when they're when when they've served their time and become productive people? Um, so this, there's this new focus on um, on uh rehabilitation rather than punishment, which is led by Elam Linz uh, in New York. Uh, and so um, uh, the some eastern state penitentiary in Pennsylvania is uh created, uh Sing Sing in New York is created. Um, and then Auburn is the Auburn system uh is is created as well. And they felt like um you can see here, all of the the uh, the prisoners in those those striped uniforms in lockstep, they had chains. And they had chain gangs and they felt like in the Auburn system that that like hard work has this this like good effect on on your character, on your soul. Uh, and that through hard work, you can basically learn uh, how to be a productive member of society. So chain gangs uh really um were became like a new way to kind of keep prisoners occupied, keep keep them from committing suicide, things like that, which had been the case with a lot of the solitary confinement. Um, it it actually has a really, you know, a bad effect on people's mental health. Yeah, Ethan, what were you gonna say?
I feel like, you know, the whole chain gang system and that sort of thing, a lot of, you know, capitalist sort of in terms of economy looking stuff. It's like, yeah, well, they're just doing nothing the entire time. Might as might as well make them do something productive.
True, it does have these uh, these.
However, I think later on, I think even in modern times of how it's done now, it has a sort of negative effect of prison labor is a lot cheaper than pay than regular labor.
We're actually gonna talk about this when we talk about something in Tennessee, which I won't totally spoil, but yes, you are one hundred percent correct.
And that causes a lot of problems and that basically what happens in those situations is that it creates a vicious cycle where people go to prison because they can't make their court date because they gotta go to their job because they fear that they'll lose it if they miss a day to prison labor.
Yeah, like, and and this is still a debate we're having nowadays, like, what do we do with prisoners to rehabilitate them? Like, how do you rehabilitate people and get them to not be criminal anymore? Um, so Zach, what were you gonna say?
That sounds suspiciously like the work sets you free from the the concentration camps that the Nazis had.
Okay, yes, I didn't even think of that. But yes, that does sound a little suspiciously like that. Although, yeah, that was slave labor, but like now this is a loophole in the Thirteenth Amendment. Remember, it says neither slavery nor involuntary servitude, except as a punishment for a crime where the party shall have been duly uh uh convicted, shall exist within the United States. So there is that carve out where you can make people work for free if they're a prisoner. And then uh, Nick, what were you gonna say?
I know overall before, like the new systems were implemented prison just kind of sucked, I'm assuming. Um, but like, what was the solitary confinement like at that time? This, because you said people are like um committing suicide over it, so I'm guessing it's pretty brutal.
Yeah, I mean, we still have solitary confinement, but it's considered, you know, it's like where you're not with any other prisoner. You're like by yourself in a cell. Um, so uh, and some jails, I think, just did that to control the population more or to make it make it suck more, so to speak. So it would like, you know, like when you're like, yeah, when I went to prison, I didn't like have a bunch of friends and I didn't, you know, we weren't able to like, you know, uh, make it seem okay. I it was really bad. I never want to go back there because I was by myself all the time, you know, kind of thing. So, you know, the focus on making it as as painful as possible. So like, you'd never want to go back there, kind of the deterrence way of looking at things versus the um you know, hey, we want to, we want to actually have people come out of here and and be rehabilitated, like so they so they they can actually rejoin society and be productive people. So yeah, we're still having this debate now, like what is the best way to deal with prisoners? So um, Ethan, what were you gonna say?
Doesn't like reforms on the line of these sort of go hand in hand with civil disobedience? Because I think if the punishment is less harsh, then people will be more you know, inclined to disobey.
Right, the whole like deterrence, like fear, like, you know, like, hey, we'll give people heavy drug, like it's like nowadays, it's like, hey, we'll give you like a twenty-year prison sentence for for dealing drugs, you know, uh, just as a way to try to stop it, you know, because of the fear you have.
Along that line, I think is like Oregon, out of nowhere during the election, like legalized, well, it decriminalized. Basically, if you were found with like drugs like heroin, meth and cocaine on you, like if you weren't supposedly with the intent to deal, you wouldn't face prison time, you would just be put in like rehab.
Yeah, it's right. There we're we're still trying to figure this one out. Um.
Yeah, it's just a hard to find the balance of, well, we don't want to just make these people suffer, but we also want to make people obey the law.
Right. Is it fear? Or is it something else that will get people to behave? You know, I mean, that's kind of the 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 bottom line. Max, what were you gonna say?
What uh labor are they like doing? Because I feel like if they're doing something that could potentially take a job away from a person who's in society, that would make at least a few people like mad at this.
Oh, yeah, like like you guys are anticipating this thing where there's gonna be prison labor used to do something that workers do and it's gonna create this big, you know, uh, labor revolt kind of thing. Um, it's generally speaking, they would just find something like it would be breaking up rocks uh, or into gravel or some kind of task, which was relatively menial, but did produce something of value, which then the state would have to decide what to do with it. Because right, you are right. You're like, um, hey, this is competing with what private businesses do. So uh, but generally speaking, it wasn't on a large enough scale to really, you know, like, because they diversified it, they didn't have everybody in the state doing the same thing uh, to really be a competitor to businesses. Um, although there are cases like the one we're gonna talk about in Tennessee that that are exceptions to that. And Zach, what were you gonna say? Zach Vandembosh?
Um, so is this going to like make people upset in that um they're letting people who have like committed crimes do um, just be out in society more instead of being more by themselves?
Right, they've got a guard and they have to wear the striped uniform. This is where the striped uniforms really become a thing because they're trying to make sure everybody knows that those people are prisoners. So it's a bit of public shaming. It's a bit of uh, you know, everybody kind of seeing, hey, we're putting these people to work. They're gonna do something useful. Um, and they have guards with them. And of course, if they try to escape or anything, they'll get shot. Um, but uh, yeah, like there it is, it is sparking a debate, you know, like the question is, is this healthy? Is this what we want? Um, is this producing the results we want? Um. You'll see, we're gonna get into like, you know, does this, is this effective? Because you don't see as much forced labor now. Uh, the Auburn system was in vogue back at the time. Everybody thought, oh, yeah, that's the way to do it. That's the way to make these people into productive people, but it's not really considered to be like the way to do it now. Although there are aspects of that that are still part of being in prison. Uh, Zach, what were you gonna say?
Did the US ever make an attempt to just have a penal colony Australia style like the British did, where they just take their people and dump them somewhere and say, figure it out?
Well, okay, and and to a certain extent, like the whole, you know, like Georgia and the whole um Australia, it wasn't like, hey, we're gonna take all of our worst prisoners, like our rapists and our murderers and and then the really violent people and stick them there. A lot of those people were your your minimum security types or your um debtors. A lot of people, because again, people could be thrown in prison for debt back. So with Australia and Georgia both, those prisoners weren't all bad people, although there were some in the in the crowd. Uh, but um, yeah, a penal colony. Um. Like, well, I'm trying to think of an example, like Devil's Island. I don't know if you've ever heard of Devil's Island off the coast of South America, but that is a French penal colony for like people who are who do terrible things like um, and so uh it's just an island off of the coast of French, what's called French um French Guiana, uh, which is like one of those little co- countries on the top of South America. And um, there's a guy who's involved in, like, he's an army officer who's accused of espionage, but it's not because he actually did it. He's like a Jewish guy. It's it's called the Dreyfus Affair. It's like uh, it's an AP Euro slash AP World. Yeah, have you ever heard of it? But that's that's a penal colony, like Devil's Island where where Dreyfus went, that's a penal colony. Um. I don't know if we like Alcatraz is probably the closest thing we have to that because it's in San Francisco Harbor, but there's an actual prison built on it. Um, I would say that if I were to say there were any penal colonies at the United States that I can think of, although there may be one that I just don't know about or can't remember, um it would be Alcatraz. Um, does that answer your question or?
It it just seems to me like they spent so much time trying to figure out what to do with their rapists and murderers that like just getting rid of them doesn't seem like a bad idea. Just go figure it out. Like, I I don't know. I would think at some point there would some be some sort of movement to just get rid of them, not kill them or anything, but just you're no longer, you you have committed a crime so heinous, you are no longer have the rights and protections of the US government. We're gonna put you on this island, figure it out. Like, I figured that would have taken hold at some point, but it doesn't seem it ever has.
Yeah, yeah. And again, it all comes down to those fundamental like rights you have as a citizen. You know, like even if you are in prison, you know, you have certain freedoms and like the amendments protect you to a certain extent. But um, yeah, that's an interesting concept. I mean, you you kind of wonder because sometimes there are groups of people that people, you know, still like say, hey, these people just, you know, stick them on an island, let them kill each other kind of thing. Uh, Ethan, what were you gonna say?
Yeah, I was just saying, when it comes to the prison reform, I think this started the whole, you know, private prison thing, because I think before that, because prisons weren't profitable exactly before this. So most of them were like government owned and state owned. But after.
Funded, right, like you could get funding from the state, but you still operate it like a business.
Yeah, but here's, and then like basically after prison reform, it makes it a lot more attractive for private institutions to run prisons basically for profit, which then is its own complete argument of is it is it just and moral to basically make money off of a person's person's prison sentence?
Right. Uh, and there's so many debates in here. Like, I don't know if you all have heard of Jeremy Bentham, but he is kind of like the archetype of of liberal like thinking. Uh, he's from Britain in the the mid eighteen hundreds. He's considered like one of the greatest liberals in history. Um, and he wrote a book on on what to do, like how to reform the prison system to make it where people are um are actually reformed by it called Panopticon, um, which has become kind of the thing. People always refer back to. Uh, but anyway, what were you gonna say, Ethan?
One thing also that a lot of people attack nowadays is the parole system and how specifically it's structured. Because um, basically it's kind of a paradox in how it is of you got a label that you are you basically are a felon. And that makes you less likely to get a job, but you gotta have a job to, you know, fill out your parole requirements.
Yeah, yeah. Um, well, I mean, honestly, it's the like we're just, we're not gonna solve this this problem. This is one of those things where we're still trying to figure it out and there is no.
Yep. Basically, the argument some people are making is that the current prison systems and how they're set up basically make it so that you're just in and out for the rest of your life. And that basically, once you get a taste of prison, you're never gonna be free.
Yeah, I mean.
No matter, and and then they they clash with that because then that doesn't make sense of how actually, how can a person, you know, who done a menial crime receive the same overall time in prison in life than a person who like dealt drugs or committed murder?
Yeah. Um, very, very true. Um, and yeah, I think we're gonna um, we're at the, we're at the limit for the two hours, but I was planning on on just bear with me this one last time for this quarter, just going a third hour, just because we lost so much time this week. Um, so if you want to stick around, you can. Uh, if you um, remember, if you get your contributions in, you don't have to write anything. Um. But uh, I was, yeah, I was gonna head into that into that third hour just because of the amount of material we have to try to get through um and kind of where we're at. So um we'll we'll keep moving here. Yeah, Zach, go ahead.
I I gotta leave. I'm really sad. I'm gonna miss your y'all's conversation on the communism and anarchism, but I I I gotta leave.
Yeah, I gotta leave too. I was just, the main thing I was hoping to do today is get with my slide.
Yeah, if if you uh, if you have like, you know, a headphone and can stick it in wherever you're going, you can still listen, but you won't be able to uh, like of course, participate. But then, you know, of course, also you can just listen to it later too, which I highly encourage you to do. Um, all right, so uh, in that, in that vein, we are going to continue with another one of the great reformers in our in our country's history, a guy by the name of Horace Mann. Um, Horace Mann had his life set. He was, he had graduated from Brown and uh, was admitted to the Massachusetts Bar. He was gonna be a lawyer. Everything was great. And then his wife died. Um, uh, his his, he'd only been married for two years and he was devastated. Like, he he was, the grief just wrecked him as a person. Um, so some of his relatives were looking for a way to to keep him solvent financially, while while he just tried to get over his wife's um, uh, death. And there was this like, there was a position that was open uh, within the um within the state of Massachusetts, a government position. Um, there was a Board of Education that had been created and they needed a person to kind of lead it, a Secretary of the New Board of Education. So uh, some of his relatives were able to get him this appointment uh, as the new Massachusetts, the new head of the Massachusetts Board of Education. But and and you see this sometimes when people are dealing with with grief. Um. Horace Mann actually decided to throw himself into his new position as a way to to like deal with um, the fact, you know, that he was so upset over his wife's death. And um, he actually ends up uh, creating systematic reform of the education system uh, across the entire state of Massachusetts. He pushes for literacy for every child and moral development as well. He was the one who brought in um, these uh, these textbooks known as McGuffey readers. Um, and actually is kind of single-handedly able to champion the idea of compulsory public education for children. And teacher training and professionalism for teachers. So he really is the guy who we can point to as the father of the public education system. Because what is the punishment? Does anyone know? Um, if you don't send your kid to school? I mean, we have people who who deal with this at our school all the time. It starts with a T. It's actually a crime. Uh, and and a parent can go to jail for it, uh, if they if they don't get their kid into school. Anybody? What's what's it called?
Truancy.
Truancy, yes, very good, truancy. So um uh, this is where we get laws being passed, and this is state by state. But most states adopt this as they see it working in Massachusetts, because it of course makes your state more economically competitive, because everybody in your state is is more hirable. Um, and of course, uh, you know, you know, having people able to do these basic things, uh, of course, is just gonna help the country in general. But um yeah, so this is kind of a revolution in the eighteen forties uh, that is led by Horace Mann and leads to the creation of public school systems in every state across the country. Um, all right, to kind of balance things out uh, in the uh, admission of states into the Union, uh, because a number of slave states had been admitted recently. Um uh, the state of Wisconsin uh, is is admitted. Now, it had actually gone far above the sixty thousand person threshold uh, to a hundred and fifty thousand people. Um. But uh, hadn't uh, applied for uh, like statehood yet. So uh, they meet uh, the delegates from across the state, meet, they create a state constitution. Um, but the state constitution is really ahead of its time. Uh, it basically uh, is is very radical. It it um, you know, says that African Americans should have the right to vote, okay, uh, and and have the rights of others. says that African Americans should have the right to vote, okay, uh, and and have the rights of other citizens. It wanted to give married women the right to own property. Uh, and so Wisconsin has always had this reputation of being kind of a leading liberal state. Uh, it it has been kind of a cutting edge place for 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 liberal ideas in a lot of ways. Uh, we're gonna keep coming back to it. You know, there's a reformer later, Robert LaFalle, who has the quote, Wisconsin idea uh, that he puts forward um, later on. So um, but this is too much for people in the rest of the country to stomach at the time. They can't, they can't handle uh, equality for African Americans or more equality for women. Um, so uh, 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 and oh, I'm sorry. And then the state of Wisconsin, the people there voted down the more radical constitution. And so a more moderate state constitution was uh, adopted. Uh, and then of course, the 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 other states which were are gonna oppose them also were like less like willing to oppose them. And so then they were able to enter the state as the thirtieth state. Um, enter the Union as the thirtieth state in eighteen forty-eight. Alright, we have another commune. Okay, yes, uh, Jacob, what were you gonna say?
I was gonna ask about the uh, more moderate, uh, more moderate constitution. Was it more? Was it still more liberal than other state constitutions in comparison?
Yes, it is still more liberal than than other state constitutions, but the big sticklers, which are giving African Americans the right to vote and giving married women the right to uh, control property are taken out of the um, more moderate.
Okay.
So yeah, so those, but but in comparison to other state constitutions, that's actually a great question. Uh, yes, it is still far more liberal um, than others. So the Wisconsin has always been that way. It's just been a a place of kind of forward-thinking people um, in terms of like, you know, social and political uh, issues. Alright. It's it's kind of funny. The most successful commune is kind of a weird cult, okay? It's like, when you have a commune, you gotta figure out, how are you gonna get everybody in the commune to not be selfish and to do what you want them to do. So um, sometimes religion can be a great motivator. This guy by the name of John Humphrey Noyes was a Yale divinity student. And he basically just kind of came up with his own religion. Uh, for the first part of his uh, new philosophy is that um, the second coming of Jesus had already taken place in seventy AD. And that he himself, John Humphrey Noyes himself, had already reached a state of perfection and could no longer sin. And so he gra- he kind of attracted this group of followers, uh, and they moved out to Oneida, New York in eighteen forty-eight and built a commune. And uh, in this, the Oneida commune, as it was called, um, he said that everything had to be shared in common, including wives and children. So this is what we call complex marriages. Where you don't, you're not really married to one woman as a man. You could basically have a relationship with anyone. Uh, and uh, so wives and husbands, it kind of breaks down the family to a certain extent. Wives and husbands allowed other men and women to have relations with them, with their significant other. And parenting was also done as a community. You you didn't raise your own kids. You raised all the kids together as a community. Um, so complex marriage is kind of a a like a way of like almost breaking down the family unit. And um, the community, because of the religious fervor that kind of accompanies a lot of their, the way they did things, becomes a self-sufficient community. They built this big mansion house. They started several successful businesses. Uh, there's still like Oneida, like that that's actually a brand name for some for some products. Uh, I'm trying to remember what some of them are. I think maybe silverware, Oneida silver. Am I right on that? I can't remember, but um, anyway, the Oneida commune is actually the most successful of all of the commune experiments uh, in our in our history, but it does have this kind of, you know, this this Christian cult that goes along with it. Another kind of odd little Christian cult that that emerges at this time is um, the United Society of Believers in Christ Second appearing uh, who are known as the Shakers, okay? Which people often confuse the word shaker and quaker because they sound similar, but they're they're actually different. The Shakers um, are known for these intense dances that take place during their services. And they're kind of a small splinter group from the Quaker Church in, which starts off in the home of Mother Anne Lee. In England in seventeen forty-seven. And basically she said, I am the second coming of Christ. Okay, so very similar to John Humphrey Noyes. Um, and uh, she said that she was the second coming of Christ in female form. And she said that, so this is the opposite of the Oneida commune. She said that um, in order to be close to God and to have this intense relationship with him, um, you have to give up all sex. And so basically, uh, in order to be a shaker, you had to adopt this celibate life. Um, and surprisingly, there are a number of shaker communities that appear in the American colonies as this kind of catches fire. Especially in upstate New York, uh, New Hampshire, Massachusetts and Kentucky. And um, you can't have people born into a shaker community because shakers do not have any relations with anybody. Instead, you have to convert people. Um, so through conversions and adopting of children, which they did adopt children, um, they grew to about six thousand people by the eighteen forties and like the Oneida commune, they practiced this kind of communal living. Uh, but they have separate quarters for men and women. And um, could only um, uh, add children through adoption. Yeah, Scott, what were you gonna say?
What if they just got everyone enjoying, they eventually all died out?
Yeah, well, that's the thing. The Shakers are gone. Uh, the last Shakers uh, like have basically uh, uh, I remember seeing a documentary on this where they interviewed some very old people who were like the very last Shakers because without children being adopt, like being born, I mean, the adoptions, yeah. Are but like, I think if you're adopted into the shaker community, you don't have to stay a shaker. Um, but yeah, the movement dies out and I think it was like not that long ago that the very last Shakers died. Um, but they produced some amazing products, just like the Oneida commune. Um, they they really like poured themselves into their work. And so shaker furniture is actually like a thing, you know, like, you know, if you're into furniture and stuff, you you've probably heard of shaker furniture before. Uh, they were excellent craftsmen. But just another one of those odd little cults that's part of um, American society. Yeah, go ahead, Nick.
I just, these are, these, both the Oneida Shakers seemed very just odd to me, but didn't they? Did they receive a bunch of backlash at the time for their just kind of?
Were they an aviator? Well, the fact that they weren't like the Mormons and they didn't try to like live in society, but they kind of started their own little commune and they had their own compound and they didn't like really come out of it, so to speak. Um, and they weren't challenging like things that people considered like fundamental, like um, like marriage, you know? Like although the Oneida people did, it's just that they kind of did it within their own compound and didn't really uh, spread out. Yeah, actually, for whatever reason, uh, it may have been because they made such excellent product. People accepted them. Um, so it's kind of interesting. Uh, you know, they're just I mean, uh, like, I don't, I don't see how they they got so many converts, you know, it just doesn't sound um, uh, like a, like it's something that a lot of people would wanna do, but uh, it it, you know, it really caught fire for a little while there. Uh, did you have anything else you wanted to say, Nick, or just forget to put your hand up? Alright, just wondering. Um, alright. Another one of the great pioneers in women's uh, rights uh, is uh, becomes like prominent during this time. And that is Lucretia Mott, okay? Lucretia Mott actually starts off um, as Lucretia Coffin. Uh, and that was her, that was her maiden name. And she was a Quaker, uh, who was an anti-slavery activist, but also was a women's rights activist. So this goes back to what we were talking about earlier, you know? Do people promote more than one cause and some did? So Lucretia Mott, um, uh, basically you know, kind of was was big in both both areas. She married a fellow teacher after graduating school named James Mott and they moved to Philadelphia. And she be and uh, became uh, and James Mott became a Quaker minister. And uh, Lucretia Mott joined with black women in the city and formed the Philadelphia Anti-Female Anti-Slavery Society. And uh, she actually um, attended the World Anti-Slavery Convention in eighteen forty. And uh, people at the World Anti-Slavery Convention discounted her because she was a woman. So she experienced discrimination at this, at this big convention because she was a woman. And she had to sit in a segregated section of the convention with other women. Uh, so while she was there though, she met and struck up a friendship with one of the greatest leaders of the women's rights movement in our entire history, Elizabeth Cady Stanton. And uh, they began a plan, holding a women's rights convention in America to challenge the divorce laws of the time that gave all the rights over the children to the man and not to the woman. Um, and so that is Lucretia Mott, who's gonna have a big influence on the women's rights movement. And that takes us to Elizabeth Cady Stanton and Lizbeth, this is her slide. And she is not here, so I will um, I have someone doing a National History Day project on Elizabeth Cady Stanton. Uh, Elizabeth Cady Stanton is incredible, okay? So she is really the true intellectual giant behind the women's rights movement. Um, because she's highly intelligent. Um, and she is the child of a federalist attorney uh, for a father who made sure that he she received a proper education along with her brother-in-law. And um, she becomes a very like, kind of radical person in some ways. She becomes an atheist, rejects all organized religion and becomes involved in the abolitionist movement and the temperance movement. And that's how she met her husband Brewster Stanton. Um, and with him, she had seven children. And uh, with Lucretia Mott, she organized the Seneca Falls Conference and um, really becomes kind of the the intellectual leader of the um, uh, the, so she has like uh, and not only in education, but she also knows the law really well. She has legal expertise. And so um, when, you know, like, who do you normally think of when you think of the great pioneer of of women's rights in American history? Anybody? Like, just give me a name, like who who pops?
Susan B Anthony.
Susan B Anthony. Guess who wrote most of Susan B Anthony's speeches? This lady, yeah. This lady is the brains behind the whole thing, okay? And like, she's one of those people that you would never wanna get in an argument with. Like, she destroys people. It is, she is really entertaining to read, by the way, uh, just because she is such like a logical like master, like i- i- it is like trying to argue with someone who's a really good lawyer, like it's just, you get absolutely destroyed. Uh, and so I did want to, um, oh, I I haven't gotten to it quite yet. Yeah, go ahead, Lauren. What were you gonna say?
A question because you know, women weren't really supposed to be really, um, I don't know what I'm trying to say, but was her husband affected by this, like his standing? Because I know a lot of women at that time weren't supposed to have, um, or weren't supposed to be really smart and really um, involved in politics and all that.
He respects her as an equal. Like when they enter into their marriage, they enter into their marriage as intellectual equals. Like, and he throughout her, their marriage respects her as his equal and never tries to impose kind of the man's role on the marriage. He he, you know, like the whole marriage from beginning to end is always, you know, her and him having is an equal partnership, which in a lot of ways is what marriages are are more like nowadays. Um, uh, but you know, back then, that was not considered, you know, the way, but but yes, her husband is very forward-thinking as well. Like they would, their their marriage never would have survived if it hadn't been for that. Uh, and actually, I'm gonna look up this this primary source in just like one second after we get to um, her, oh, and by the way, um, you can look this up. Uh, it's at the National Archives. What she does is she goes through the Bible and she basically gets rid of all of the patriarchal concepts in the Bible and rewrites it. Uh, and basically creates what is known as the Women's Bible. So you know how Jefferson took out a lot of things and created the Jefferson Bible and was called, you know, an atheist and things for that. She does the same thing. Uh, and so the Women's Bible is is one of her uh, more well-known works. Um, but um, in eighteen forty-eight, she and uh, Lucretia Mott call together along with um, Susan B Anthony is 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 just gonna get introduced to this group uh, as they get into this, but um, uh, they they pretty much organize the first conference on women's rights, which is at Seneca Falls. And the Seneca Falls Convention, which Susan B Anthony is not at, but she becomes part of this movement just just right afterwards. Is basically this this big uh, convention of women who decide that they are going to start a movement in the country. Okay, so Margaret Fuller did write about things. But really, this is where the women's rights movement begins. So put a huge star by this. This is like really important. Um, and in this movement, they create the Declaration of Sentiments. And this is mostly Elizabeth Cady Stanton, okay? And this is where she turns the um, uh, the Declaration of Independence kind of on its head a little bit. Um, So does anybody wanna guess? What is the Declaration of Sentiments going to be? If it's kind of like the Declaration of Independence, it's the Declaration of what?
To say that all men and women are created equal?
Yes, and it's basically women declaring their independence from men, okay? Uh, so it's it's hilarious actually because she takes the same exact language. Um, so here it is. And this is the same language from the Declaration. When in the course of human events, it becomes necessary for one portion of the family of man to assume among the people of earth, a position different from that which they have hitherto occupied, but one to which the laws of natures and natures God entitle them. A decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires they should declare the causes that impel them to such a course. We held these truths to be self-evident, that all men and women are created equal and endowed by their creator with certain inalienable rights, and that she kinda goes through. And it's like, basically the exact same language, which was considered so, you know, brilliant, you know, that Jefferson wrote. Um, and then like, but she she basically makes it uh, where women are the ones who are are being uh, you know, uh, treated poorly and have to declare their independence. And so the history of mankind is a history of repeated injuries and usurpations on the part of man towards woman, having in their direct object, the establishment of an absolute tyranny over her. To prove this, let the facts be submitted to a candid world. He has never permitted her to exercise her inalienable right to the elective franchise, meaning the right to vote. He has compelled her to submit to laws in the formation which she had no voice. He has withheld from her the rights which are given to the most ignorant and degraded men, both natives and foreigners. He has deprived her of her, of the first right of a citizen, the elective franchise, thereby leaving her without representation in the halls of legislation. He has oppressed her on all sides. He has made her, if married, in the eye of the law, civilly dead. Uh, so what you are seeing here is basically a rewriting of the Declaration of Independence. And yet it's instead of being for um, uh, you know, the American colonies against Britain, it is for men against women. And with her sharp legal mind, he, she is able to just absolutely skewer men. I mean, it is like, uh, you know, I I I almost like can't think of somebody who could win in an argument with Elizabeth Cady Stanton. Go ahead, Kenzie, who are you gonna, what are you gonna say?
I just wanna say, I think that that was so smart to use the Declaration of Independence and turn it around.
Isn't that awesome?
Way, and I have like so much respect for that.
Yeah, you, like, I would highly encourage. Yeah, you like I would highly encourage you to read the rest of it and like if you ever get a chance. Like I know we just time is our enemy when in this class cuz there's so much to cover um but. If you ever get a chance to read Elizabeth Cady Stanton, it is very entertaining. Like she is like just a logical legal giant like uh it it just I I don't know. People don't give her the respect that she deserves, but boy, does she deserve it um. So anyway, um just an incredible uh incredible contribution um and this, of course, you know, make sure you have this down. Is the beginning, the official beginning of the women's rights movement uh in America. And really, to a certain extent, that is going to broaden itself out to other parts of the world as well. Although there is a women's rights movement kind of happening in Britain as well. So um that is the Seneca Falls Convention and the Declaration of Sentiments. I agree with you one hundred percent, Kenzie. It is brilliant. It is absolutely brilliant to take something which was so hollowed and to just basically, you know, turn it right against. You know, men and say, look, look at how you treat us. Nick, what were you gonna say?
Is the original document document preserved at all like the Declaration of Sentiments?
Pretty sure it is, pretty sure it is. I'm not exactly sure where it's housed um. We would have to look that up. If somebody wants to look that up, feel free and you can just kind of um drop that in the conversation. But uh the I think the original still exists um yeah, but uh. What an incredible like like she so like when the women's rights movement gets more and more organized. And and Susan B Anthony is out there the as the face of the movement and is making those speeches and is like really swaying people and is really like. I mean, you know, becomes famous um. The intellectual power behind her arguments comes from Elizabeth Cady Stanton. Who in a lot of ways is trying to balance, you know, like being a mother of seven kids. And um you know, being this kind of brilliant uh intellectual giant in the women's rights movement. Um and so she and Elizabeth Cady's uh I'm sorry, she and Susan B Anthony kind of share the burden. Cuz sometimes Susan B Anthony will watch her kids while she goes and makes speeches and then sometimes she will go. Uh she she will just basically say, hey, this, you know, and she will write a speech or she'll, you know, write a good part of a speech. Or kind of, you know, edit a speech to make it more like but like if you try to argue with her as a lawyer even, you would get destroyed. She's amazing. Alright, anyway, um that takes us to the invention of the sewing machine, which is Noah, but he's not here. So I'll have to make sure remind him uh that he needs to pick a different one. But in eighteen forty-six, a a guy named Elias Howe receives a patent for the invention of the sewing machine. Which basically, the the way this works is it pokes the needle down through. And when the needle goes down below the fabric, it has something called a bobbin, which throws another thread through the needle. Uh there's there's a little loop that's created when the needle pokes below the surface. And so this bobbin will like basically just take the thread and and throw it right through that loop. And so and then it just kind of moves quickly and so um uh that revolutionizes the textile industry. Like literally revolutionizes it and and a guy named Isaac Singer sees how like sees the possibilities for this machine. And of course, he's probably the better businessman out of the two. And so um he builds a close replica of Howe's machine and then begins to sell it and market it and becomes a millionaire as a result. Um and Howe sues him for copyright infringement, wins and um the basically, they both become millionaires. Um so uh that is the sewing machine and uh of course, the the textile industry will never be the same. Uh because things do not have to be stitched by hand anymore. And that takes us to Boyer's slide uh so Boyer.
Let me uh pull up all my stuff real quick. I got I got some stuff for this.
Well, I hope there's some people who would like to debate Boyer on this uh if we can get a good debate going. It's really uh sad that Zach is not gonna be around for the.
I wasn't prepared. That's the only reason was because I can't go into an argument without facts to back me up.
I hear you. I hear you, Zach. Yeah, but I'm talking about Zach uh uh Cooper because last time uh he and Boyer had this just awesome debate. On socialism, so um.
Trying to pull up this uh like all my information, but it's it's not being very uh cooperative.
So um yeah, I so I was I was hoping for a reprise of that. I know Zach's sad that he can't make it. Uh he's right, he's got work or something, but um.
Makes me sad that I'm not in that class period to hear about stuff.
They have had some Boyer and Zach.
It's very fun.
Some some real good debates in there, yeah.
We're on mock trial together too, so this is gonna be a really entertaining.
Fun, awesome.
Okay, so communism. Um so communism uh was really brought forward by Karl Marx and that's why you hear Marxism a lot. It's I mean, it's really the same thing communism, Marxism, Marxism being kind of the original idea of communism. Uh you had him and Friedrich uh Engels.
Yes.
Uh write the Communist Manifesto and that kind of gives an overview of all of the beliefs of communism. Communism itself, Karl Marx's ideas were, when you read into it, largely based around the idea that capitalism would fail. In just in nature, that capitalism couldn't succeed. So a lot of his theory was actually instead of the uh how to set up communism. He believed that communism was in inevitable in nature. And most of his theory was just about uh the capitalist society and how capitalism would eventually fall. So he split up people into two major classes, like you know, we talk about the lower and upper class. He had the proletariat and the bourgeoisie. And the proletariat was the class that was like the working class, so they would, you know, in these big factories that were were very common. You would have the factory workers earning their wages and then you would have the bourgeoisie who were kind of the uh upper class. That would rule over the proletariat, who were factory owners and government officials in that class.
Yeah, and it's like, it's it's like, isn't it bourgeoisie or bourgeoisie, you know, like the it's a it's a French word, so it's very.
It's bourgeoisie, I think.
Okay, yeah. Alright, thank you for that.
Yeah, um so his idea was that eventually the proletariat would um. Just become so marginalized that they would rise up and there would be a big collapse and then revolt from the proletariat. And they would take over the industry, uh eventually pushing out the bourgeoisie and kind of eliminating that class system. And then by definition, the proletariat would also not exist anymore and they would have a they would have a classless society. So it was.
Hold on just a sec. So basically, this is the argument in Das Kapital, which is where he predicts that um that capitalism will self-destruct. But he's living in England at the time. He's a German, but he's living in England. And he's watching something happen in England, in the factories. Um does anybody know, like, what is he watching happen in the factories? Which of course, you know, is happening in England, gets kind of transferred over to the United States by Samuel Slater um. And really is kind of, you know, happening all over the world. And then there's the reaction of this group called the Luddites against uh against this this phenomenon that is happening in uh in England. What is going on in England at this time that is causing workers to like their labor is becoming cheapened? And they're getting replaced by these things. What it what is what is happening?
Well, they have this revolution of machinery and stuff that's coming forward, so people aren't needed as much as they have this new technology.
Exactly, yeah. So it is the Industrial Revolution is like so he's watching workers, their labor is worthless. And he he is extrapolating into the future and he's saying eventually, the factory owners are just gonna replace all the workers with machines. And then the workers are gonna be like basically this this poor this really big class of poor people who don't have anything. And then they're gonna rise up and just overthrow the entire capitalist system and completely destroy it. So there have thi- this is going to cause people to worry that capitalism will self-destruct someday. So every time we have a financial panic, there are people who are talking about Marx, you know, like is is this what Marx is talking about? And of course, what's the big one where they really thought that Marx was actually gonna be proven right in the United States? Which is the United States is like the pure capitalist experiment, like we are like one hundred percent pure capitalism all the way up until. The nineteen twenties, what does everybody think is going to be the end of capitalism then and is going to prove Marx right?
The Great Depression.
The Great Depression, right, so um when FDR comes in off, he's like, if I don't get this right, I'll be the last American president. That's how powerful this prediction is that that he made about capitalism. People believe that he that it made sense that 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 eventually capitalism would self-destruct. So um go ahead, sorry.
Um so we have uh the the interesting thing about this is mar- our Marxism um communism, you know, whatever. Uh is pretty much extreme socialism up into the political and government level um along with the economy. But they're almost opposites in that socialism is more looking, pretty much seeing that people are generally good. And socialism, people wanna share, everybody should be on the same level. Well, the Marxist ideas is actually that people are are inherently bad and selfish. And that the capitalist system will eventually completely collapse because of this this selfishness and this greed. And so will eventually split up into this society where it's classless. And instead of nationalizing all the industry and having the government take it over, which uh Karl Marx thought was still. A form of capitalism, saying that the government was still profiting. Um so they were the the government would pretty much become the the bourgeoisie and take over industry. He wanted to um uh I I'm not sure the word I would socialize, I guess, would be the word.
Everybody kind of owned everything, kind of.
Yeah, yeah, so there was no real private property. Everything was just um there. Yeah, yeah, everything was public domain, everything in in the country, so.
Hold on a second, Grayden, do you have a question?
Yeah, so, okay, so if the if the government takes over everything and like they're like nothing's owned by any one. Like class of people, doesn't that make government officials like the new bourgeoisie?
Yeah, like like how does that work exactly, Boyer? Like does like can can you really have nobody owning things? Or is like if the government holds things in trust for the people, so to speak, like he like he predicted or like he wanted. Um doesn't that mean that they really still own it and can profit off of it?
This really gets into a paradox and it's ridiculous. I mean, the whole system in general is a ridiculous idea. And it just could never work because like you're saying, somebody has to own something, somebody has to be profiting. Unless you get into, I think the next slide is anarchism, unless you're getting into anarchism, something, there's always some sort of um hierarchy. And some sort of system setup.
Somebody has to have control, like.
Yeah.
Marx Marx felt like nobody would own things like but there would be like a group of government officials who are like dedicated. And like they're like like really dedicated communists and they would basically hold things in trust for the people. Until such a time that the people were able to then kind of just just kind of have this thing where everybody owned everything. So Nick, what were you gonna say?
How's like farming in production and all that stuff gonna work if like no one like owns any land or any resources? How would that like function or work? No one like technically owns anything.
Okay, excellent question. Go ahead.
Um we saw especially in if you look at the Soviet Union with farming and everything, everything just shut down. I mean, there was nothing. People didn't have any jobs. There was no production going on because there was.
Hold on a second. What they did was they collectivized the farms, so which means they forced all of the little independent farmers, the kulaks, to give up their farms. And they had to join these big giant government farms. So you like they made people go out and work on the big government farms. What's the problem with those farms though? Like you're you're right, Boyer, in a sense, but just tell me, like technically, the government kind of had these giant collective farms. What was the problem with them? Why was no work getting done? Why weren't they very productive?
I mean, they didn't have any food. They weren't really getting paid um.
It's 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 more than that. It it this is the this is the problem at the very, very heart of communism. Uh Nathan, what were you gonna say? We'll we'll come back to this question in just a second. Go ahead, Nathan.
I was gonna ask, so since the government would control everything, that would mean like the very top of the government would basically control everything. Did Marx ever design like a system of like separation of powers or like a balance to keep people in check from like immediately becoming a dictatorship?
Okay, well, here's what he here's what he envisioned and Boyer, you can jump in on this if you want, but basically uh he's like if. We have this group of dedicated communists, they're gonna be altruistic, they're gonna do what's best for the people. They're not gonna do what's best for themselves and it's temporary. In other words, that group, that group that's going to like be in charge of the of like all of this industry for a little while and farms. They're gonna fade away and just let everybody own everything communally uh is kind of how he envisioned it. So there so the 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 government, Nathan, is supposed to be temporary and then it's supposed to kind of go away. And then you have a classless society where everybody kind of just joyfully owns everything together. And there is no rich, there is no poor, there is no ownership, everybody has enough.
But isn't that just anarchism then? Like once the garment leaves?
It a great question, Boyer. Um did you wanna add anything to that before I go to Lauren's question?
Um well, so you were talking earlier about the influence that Marxism had on just the world in general and people's views.
Yes.
And so he he wrote this idea and the the idea was pretty much like we were talking about capitalism failing. So the the question was, what would you do? You know, what what is the world gonna revert back to? Once we're completely out of this capitalist, you know, evil bourgeoisie system.
Yes.
Um and I mean, a lot of people had very different ideas. You had Marxism, Leninism, Stalinism, Maoism. All these people brought forward just completely different ideas, all centered around the same idea that capitalism was bad. And we needed to socialize society.
Right, and 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 Leninism is basically Marxism with a twist, so is Maoism. Uh so like Stalinism is is just basically, I don't it it is basically dictatorship, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Um but essentially, you know, Stalin did do the five-year plans. He did have, you know, communist system in place. He did try to make communism work and it didn't. Um but there's a problem at the very, very heart of communism that we need to come back to. So Lauren, uh you were next, so I'm gonna let you uh jump in and then we'll kind of come back to that in a little bit. So so what were you gonna say?
I was just gonna go back to the farmer question that you asked, Boyer. Um since they wouldn't be getting paid and they would be forced to go onto these big government farms. Would they have any motivation to actually do well in their job because they're being forced to do this without any sort of gain?
That's the heart of it. You just hit it. Boom. So Boyer, answer that question.
I mean, we see that with normal uh just socialism too, even in countries like like Canada. There is no, there's no point. There's no point to working because there's nowhere to go. In a capitalist system, you're free to succeed and you're free to to get wealth and be be one of the, you know, top one percent, the bourgeoisie. But in this communist system, there's nowhere to go. You're eternally in this mediocre, poor state with nothing to do.
Well, that's not how he originally envisioned it, though, but yeah.
No, but that is how it how it works out.
It's how it it's how it ends up in some of the like and the argument's gonna be made by someone who is arguing in favor of communism. That really a true communist system has never actually been implemented. Um you know, like all the attempts to implement it have been like bad in some way.
Yeah, it's the same with socialism too.
Yeah, um but uh like I wanna hear like if anybody wants to come in and kind of defend the communist side. I really wanna hear arguments on that side too, but I'll I'll try to jump in and and do that as well, just so we can kind of balance it out. But Zach, what were you gonna say?
Alright, excuse me. So I was actually gonna bring up something on the point of communism or uh against communism. Whereas like the with socialism in Canada, the doctors up there don't make a lot of money. So they're going to not be practicing to heal people. They're gonna be practicing to get money. They they won't be, their main goal.
Okay.
Excuse me.
So you're you're making an argument in favor of this and you're saying that their goal isn't greed. It's it's uh to to really do what they were like it's like being, you know, in another profession where you don't make much money, but you do it anyway cuz you love it, right?
Well, no, not necessarily because I was saying it as like with universal healthcare. They're they're government workers, so they're not making any money. So then there's no drive to like do what you are supposed to do and heal people.
Ah, okay, okay, okay. So like in a communist system and and Boyer, feel free to jump in on this cuz Zach is hitting on this very insane thing that Lauren. Cause Zach is hitting on this very insane thing that Lauren was hitting on earlier, which is really the very, very heart of this. Um, how do how much does everybody get paid? Like, is it's everybody gets paid the what?
The what, the minimum wage, I mean.
Well, okay, I mean, you're thinking, but you're always thinking of the historical examples, you're thinking of like, you know, communism in practice in Russia. You're thinking of communism, but in the ideal communist system, the one that that Marx dreams up, you know, Marx and Engels kind of like, you know, put together. What is, what do, what does everybody get paid?
Uh, no clue.
I mean, just but you 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 would kind of hit on it earlier, you just you just said it i- is like you said, everybody gets paid minimum wage. But think of it more like what the way Marx was thinking of it, like where everybody owns everything, so we all get paid the same. Okay, is is.
Yeah.
Yeah, the same, so we all get paid the same. So I I wanna just let that hang out there for a minute and let people kind of think about that for a second. If we all get paid the same, what does that do to motivation uh to work hard? Uh, and so Autumn, what were you gonna say?
Um, my question's kind of along the lines of what Lauren was saying. So how does a communist society advance if there's no incentive to like create inventions or new ways to do things?
Right, because what's the incentive for inventors? Like, why do inventors invent things? Like, what is the incentive that is driving them to put all that effort, all that skill, all that know-how into invention? What 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 reward do they get?
Money.
Money, okay, alright, so remember that that that's that question I ha- I put out there, which is, you know, in a Marxist original system. Everybody gets paid the same, there's no rich, there's no poor. Which, you know, in a lot of ways creates all kinds of social evils, you know, like there's there's, you know, rich people exploiting poor people is still. A huge problem, um. So if everybody gets paid the same, like you were just asking, what's the motivation? Um, so Autumn, what were you gonna say?
Oh, that was my question, I just forgot to put my hand down.
I'm sorry, you forgot to put your hand out, so Autumn's question, um, I think is is kind of hitting at the very, very heart of this, Nick, what were you gonna say?
I guess I'll kind of take it to like the moral standpoint, um, because if I remember correctly, from like, this is what I hear all the time. For mainly as a counterargument against communism is that like um for communism to like work, everyone has to be good. But like, that's just not really possible.
Yes, you have to get people to motivate themselves out of like the goodness, you know, like they do it for the good of the people, for the good of the country. I'm just gonna go out there and I'm gonna work hard for the good of everybody, um.
Yeah, I I find that really funny because the whole concept of Karl Marx's whole argument. Was that people were generally bad, so that co- capitalism itself would fail because people were selfish and evil. But then he turns around and writes this whole economic and political uh. Like, I I don't know, idea, political plan that involved everybody being generally good. And people wanting to work for the betterment of the people.
Yeah.
It's very backwards.
Yeah, well, okay, and and again, I wanna see some people kind of jump in on and on the side of like trying to defend Marx here if you can, if you can. Yeah, e- even if you don't agree and you wanna play devil's advocate a little bit, because I'd like to see if we can get a debate going, but um, Jacob, what were you gonna say?
Well, I was gonna bring up the whole thing like so. Yeah, while I was going off of Boyer's like communism is really just like, so first off, from what I understand, at least like stagnated economy, at least there's the stagnation of everything. Everything just stays the same for like as long as communism is in power. Also, going back to where communism, Karl Marx essentially believes all people are bad, but then communism is all based on everyone being good. If you put one group of people into power, the government is what controls everything. People are gonna get power hungry and it's going to lead to be, and it goes back to the whole p- all people being evil. Now, I'm also gonna, I'm gonna jump a little bit on the side of communism. In an ideal world, the idea of communism is not a terrible idea. It's just that in the implementation of it, the way it's been implemented throughout society, it does not work.
Okay, alright, very, very good, okay, so yeah.
Uh, yeah, so I mean, that's, yeah, exactly, that is pretty much the idea is that it should work, I mean, in an ideal world. Co- communism, socialism, it's all great. One of the biggest arguments right now and a big thing that people have been bringing up in our country even is the minimum wage. And people have talked about like a fifteen dollar minimum wage, which in when you look at that and you think about it and you know, let's say you're a McDonald's worker. Fifteen dollars an hour, that's that's pretty darn good. But then we just look at, you know, what's a McDonald's burger, like five bucks, right? So then you get this fifteen dollar minimum wage and all of a sudden, a burger costs thirty dollars. Because I mean, the inflation, when you get to this system, it just, everything is useless. If there's no, if there's no lower class, then there's no upper class. Wh- you have to have one without the other, somebody can't be rich if nobody's poor, it just doesn't work that way, it's a paradox.
Oh, okay, and let me just play devil's advocate for a second here and just kind of jump in and because like, we don't have anybody really defending yet, but. It's like, well then, is it okay to have like a society full of rich and poor people then? Like where rich people are exploiting poor people and poor people are suffering? Uh, Lauren, did I steal your comment? I I saw.
Yeah, it's 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 okay.
No, go ahead and say what you're gonna say.
No, literally, I I don't wanna, yeah, okay.
Alright, well, okay, sorry about that, I should have let you talk, um, Brayden, go ahead.
Um, I just, so you keep saying that it's Marxism is more like the idea of how. Uh, capitalism can't work, but like, h- how exactly, like, what exactly does he think is gonna happen to? For capitalism to fail, like, what what does he think is going on?
So he thinks that the proletariat, which is, you know, the working class people. Are going to get marginalized by this machinery and everything, by these this innovation, you know, the industrial revolution. To the point where they're extremely poor and can't even buy food. And then the proletariat is gonna overthrow the bourgeoisie and bring in this new society, this classless system. So he really thinks it's gonna be revolution, that's that's what he thinks is gonna end um at the end of capitalism.
Nick, what were you gonna say?
I was going to ask, have there ever been like any um s- like smaller examples, for instance, like how there's been like communes? Have there been like any smaller communities where um? Just just like an isolated group of people have just like tried just Marxism or communism, just on their own and kind of did their own thing and did that succeed at all? Cause I I we had some examples where some of the like socialism uh commies or communes did kind of work out for a little bit. Um, so is there any cases of that with communism?
Um, Boyer, I'm gonna let you go first, then I'll ta- then I'll talk too, but go ahead and answer that.
Um, alright, so it really gets down to what your definition would be. So we see uh a lot of people, like, you know, people who are pushing for socialism right now, like Bernie Sanders. They point to a lot of the um, the European countries and one in particular would be Denmark. Uh, they say Denmark is a socialist country and it's it's going very well, I mean Denmark is a very wealthy nation right now and it's very prosperous. But you have to look at how how heavily they're implementing this system. So Denmark, they really are still a free market capitalist society. But they just have these socialist uh plans put into place, like they have socialized and free healthcare. Um, but they still have a strong industry privatized healthcare that they allow to be there. They allow you to start a business really quickly, so I mean, you still have this this upper class uh of people who are who are business owners. So it, I don't think there's ever been a society that fully embraced this, unless we look at like Venezuela, who is completely free market capitalist. And then uh when um. When Hugo Chavez came in and did this, he pretty much did what Marx thought that people were gonna do. He said that the evil bourgeoisie was controlling the proletariat and marginalizing them. And he came in convinced everybody that the bourgeoisie was evil and trying to destroy their country. And they switched to a completely socialist society. And within the next couple of years, like we see now, it is a destroyed country, there's no food, everybody is leaving. I mean, it's just a horrible place to live because there's no incentive, nobody's making the food, nobody's getting paid anything. And the government has just turned into a communist uh dictatorship. So in all the instances where it has completely taken over, it just hasn't worked at all.
Okay, and let me add in um just my two cents on this as well, um, uh. What what someone who is arguing on the side of Marx would say is that actually there are tons of examples of uh communist societies that have worked. And they would say pretty much every tribe before civilization, okay? The people in the tribe all work together, so like if you if you took, for instance, like a Native American tribe. Out in the middle of the Great Plains, everybody in the tribe contributed to like the good of the whole tribe. They, you know, they didn't own things, they all shared everything, they shared responsibilities. And so Nick, um. The the response on the part of um uh, Boyer, we can hear you talk typing there, um. Uh, the response on the part of, which is fine, you just mute yourself for a second, um. Uh, the response on the part of the people who are like going to say, you know, that, hey, communism can work is that it did work. For a really long time until we had civilization, until we had people settling down and starting agriculture. And then people saw ways to game the system and get greedy. And so um, that would be the other side of the argument, so the question is, can it work in the modern world? Which, again, I think goes back to some of the stuff that Boyer was saying, um, and and it's still, I I think there's a way to debate both sides on this, but. So far, all of the experiments have failed, um, except, you know, like, there have been some small communes here and there that have that have lasted. But they had to have some way to motivate everybody, um, and oftentimes, religion has been a great way to do that. Like like you saw, for instance, in the Oneida commune, although they would say that the Brook Farm commune could have done well. Because all of the people there were transcendentalists and were going to um. You know, do what was best for the good of the people because they believed it, but it it didn't get a chance to really get going. Um, Mackenzie, what were you gonna say?
I was just gonna say that there are some good things about it, I mean, with the whole rich and poor thing, that why would you want people to struggle?
Yeah.
Like having everybody have the same thing is better because then um, cause then everybody's equal, nobody's struggling. And I don't think it'd work today because we have greedy people in the world, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so the only problem though is that's, I mean, that's a common argument, right? People don't want other people to be poor, so that's, you know. Uh, you don't wanna have this lower class, the only problem is if there's no lower class, like I was saying earlier, there's no upper class. So everybody is equal, but everybody is equally as worthless, there is nothing, there is no property, there's no way to just live your life. Because you can't get anything, if everybody's getting paid the same, then what's the point in doing anything?
Okay.
There's no society.
The point is that no one would suffer.
But no, but everybody would have an equally horrible life, so everybody would suffer if no, if if there wasn't a small population. Of people that suffered, then everybody in the world would suffer.
Ooh, I see a good debate developing here.
So if I can jump in on this debate real quick, um, so. This is a, it's a necessary evil, uh, I see. It uh i- it's just a necessary evil, you don't you don't like to see the people that are poor and suffering. But in order to have a chance at being better, at getting more money, at being. Getting up to the upper class to work for it, there has to be a system in place where there are poor and rich people.
Okay, alright, and Olivia, you've been you've been waiting for a little bit, go ahead.
Um, it was just nothing important, I was just um. I'm trying to think, sorry, basically what Boyer said was that the only way for communism to. Kind of work is for it to not be fully implemented, right? Like if you, for example, in other countries that do have communism, like he said, they've all basically failed, is that correct?
Yeah, like we have, we have, you know, the welfare system in the United States, which is like a socialist, you know, system and it. It works to an extent, I mean, we've gotten a little far with it, but some of these systems that they implement are good systems, but it. In countries where we've gone all the way with it, it's failed.
Okay.
Lauren, go ahead, what were you gonna say?
Uh, I was kinda just gonna say the same thing, like, why can't we implement some of the properties? Like we give um like healthcare easier access and a lot of mental health facilities more access where like to the common people. And just a lot of things like that where we can still have the lower class, but they can have the option to still have necessary needs, like. If they get sick, if they need their medicine, if they just need food, you know?
Okay.
That's just my, that's my thought on it.
Brought up an excellent point, which was about, I was going to bring up at the end, um, go ahead, Kenzie, what were you gonna say?
Okay, what's the benefit of having more if you can all have the same thing? If you want more, then you're just power hungry at that point.
Wait, can you say that again? I'm sorry, I wasn't really listening.
It's all good, it's all good, so what's the benefit of having more if you could all have the same thing and be equal? Then at that point, you're just power hungry.
But if we all equally have nothing, then what's the point of being equal? I so the 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 reason with that we have um capitalism. Is that we don't really have this this system like they, like uh a lot of. Like Karl Marx and everybody was pushing, we don't have this bourgeoisie controlling everything. We have, in in our country, we are completely free to succeed in life and start a business and become rich. But we're also completely free to fail. So you you have this option and even somebody who's who's homeless and has nothing, they have the chance to. To make a living for themselves and make a life for themselves, so it's kind of that that system of hope that keeps capitalism going. Where no matter what level you're at, our our economic class mobility is so high that it keeps people motivated.
That's definitely a good and valid point, but my main thing is struggling, like personally, I don't wanna see someone struggle. If they can have something that people who have more money can just give to them instead of keeping for themselves.
Okay, and Nick, go ahead, what were you gonna say?
I guess I'll kind of hop in on this, um. Man, my brain always turns off as soon as I unmute myself, but.
Yeah, I hear you, I hear you.
I guess, I c- contributing to Kenzie's other argument, who's to, I guess, say that we all ha- would have nothing if we implemented or. In that scenario, if you implemented that would. I know you're typically people are less incentivized because you're all equal and there's no like way to like kind of climb the ladder, so to speak. But if people were generally just like working together and uh trying to contribute and help each other out, um. Man.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you're right, that and that is the basis for the idea of socialism and everything. Because really, if if you look at the the Communist Manifesto and you look into socialism and Marxism. It works in theory, it's a very good idea, everybody's going to be very happy and like Kenzie was saying, everybody's gonna have something. And you're gonna have a great life, the only problem is it just realistically, it doesn't work that way, people aren't that good. People don't wanna help each other that much, people are just selfish and want something more for themselves than other people do. So if you have, I mean, getting to, you know, who's to say we would all have nothing? It, let's say, this is a really like elementary example, but let's say there's like a hundred people, right? And a one guy has a cookie and nobody else gets the cookie and everybody's kind of pissed off that this one guy has a cookie. So somebody comes in and and takes the cookie from this guy and splits it up into a hundred little crumbs for everybody. Then nobody really gets anything because what's the point in having a crumb? And and what's the point in having anything if everybody has the same thing, then you're not special, nobody's special.
Ooh, okay, Kenzie, what were you gonna say?
Thing, I kind of lost my point while I was listening, I kind of laughed about the whole cookie thing.
Alright, alright. Nick, uh, did you wanna add anything? Okay, I saw your hand disappear.
I I was gonna agree with them, I, yeah, I guess that just does make sense, it is like, it's. It is an elementary example when you compare to like, I guess, people's lives and motivations for how they do things, but it does. Kind of apply in a more basic scenario.
Yeah, i- it's just the same concept like I was talking about the minimum wage, if everybody's making this ridiculous amount of money. Then in in a perfect society, you would think, well, that's great, if everybody's making fifteen dollars an hour, then you know, one hour of work is gonna get them food for a week. You know, cause I mean, we're just gonna keep all these prices the same and everything, but people are just, you know, people want more. So if eh, you know, if a business owner sees that everybody's making fifteen dollars an hour, then they're gonna be like, wow, okay, I'm just gonna charge, you know. Quadruple the price of what I was charging because now I can make more money and I can get ahead of everybody. So eventually, there's just not gonna be anything, so if everybody has the same, then everybody really has nothing.
Hmm, okay.
In my opinion, if if I may, um. In my opinion, if, if I may, um, that's more of an issue on just rate the minimum wage and people kind of just like. Not really grasping the economic like impact of that and how that affects the economy and less of an issue on, I guess socialism. Or communism.
Alright, um, Olivia, what were you gonna say?
Um, before I make the point that I was going to make, um, my question, so I can make my point is. The government basically controls this, right? Or am I wrong?
Um, for a time, uh, this is according to Marx's original vision. The government i- is only there as a caretaker for a little bit until the people are ready. To go back to kind of the tribal mindset of, hey, we're all in this together. Let's all just work for the good of the people kind of thing.
Yeah, and it, it gets very fuzzy with his idea because it, he doesn't want things to be nationalized where the government owns everything. He doesn't want the government to control everything. He, he specifically wants to socialize everything so that the whole community owns it. But somebody has to own it and take control. So it gets very fuzzy and grade in what would actually work. So that's a lot, a lot of times the argument is we've never really implemented communism because we've never really gone down that path. But the question is, what is the path to go down?
Well, okay, but what he says is that the government would take over and, and basically this new government created by the proletariat would take over. They would basically set up all, they would own all the companies temporarily. And then they would voluntarily give those companies up to the people and everybody would own everything, which.
Okay, cause my point, I guess, was if the government controlled it tempor- temporarily, like you said. Wouldn't that basically like ninety percent leave, lead to poverty? Because what if the government basically takes advantage of that and like can sway things they, the way they want to? Towards the economy side.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering.
Perfect example, Stalin. Yeah, okay, you've hit one of the very, like, the, the heart of it really in a lot of ways, Olivia, which is. What if some greedy person takes advantage of it, which is exactly what happens with Stalin? And it hap- it seems to happen over and over again in communist, uh, experiments where like some person gets control and then they just won't let go. And then they, they, they exploit everything. Uh, Zach, what were you gonna say?
So I was going to go and say something based off of what Kenzie said, which was. Um, why don't the rich people, like the wealthy, just, um, help out the poor? But if you think about it, how did the rich people get rich? Did, did they just get that money randomly? Or, or did their family, did they, did people related to them? Like, like did their father pass them inheritance money and, and they got the businesses and kept the businesses going?
Right.
How, how are the, how is it fair to say, hey, you need to give all the rest of your money to me? Someone who makes minimum wage working at McDonald's, which is an entry level position. That should be reserved for people like us, like, like, like younger people who are trying to get in to save towards college. How is that fair to, for the, to force the people who have worked for it? To give to the people who don't want to work as hard for it?
Okay, good, good points. Um, Lauren, you, you raised your hand. Go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to comment on that. So a lot of the, we don't, we can't really decide how much money to give out to everybody if we want it to be equal. Cause like you said, um, some people have worked really hard for their money and some people have inherited it. But, um, to say that people who, you know what, I just lost my train of thought.
It's okay. I think you're on the right track though in a lot of ways. Um, and Kenzie, what were you gonna say?
I just wanted to say that it all depends on situation. Like, like you were saying, some people worked really hard for their money, kinda, um, I'm hoping this is kind of what Lauren's point was gonna be. That some people work very hard for their money, some people don't. There are some poor people who don't really have access to much and can't really do much because they might be in a situation. Where they have to give a lot of their stuff, if they do have anything, to the people they're taking care of, for example, a single mom. But it just all depends on your situation. I'm not saying that rich people have to give all of their money to the poor people. It'd just be nice to make some sort of contribution.
Okay.
Exactly what I was gonna say.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, the only problem would be that's getting into, you know, specific anecdotal situations. Which are definitely, you know, in, important to look at and, and how this would affect society. But if you're, if you're creating this whole economic and political system for society as a whole, you really have to look at. I mean, the empirical evidence that we've seen, which is that, that in a society, that's in a capitalist society. Everybody should have the same opportunity to climb their way up the ladder, um. And I mean, this system, we can't look at the anecdotal because it'll, it just isn't a good representation of the entire country as a whole. So it's a necessary evil to set up this system and sacrifice a, a portion of our, of our population. Um, but the thing is that population is always changing. So it's not like there's this, this set people that are stuck down there and are always gonna be stuck down there. The, like I said, the economic mobility is, is amazing moving around our class system. So if you're extremely poor, you can become really rich. But the same can be said the opposite way. So you see a lot of like, um, winners of the lottery who get millions of dollars. And then they spend it all and they have loans and they're broke and they end up being, you know, in this, uh, lowest class you can get to. So the economic mobility is not only up, it's also down. So this system is always changing. So it's not like the, the bourgeoisie controlling the proletariat. It, it's just one class system that keeps continually changing.
Hmm, interesting argument. Okay, and Kenzie, you still have your hand up. Did you just forget to put it down?
Oh yeah, but I just wanted to say I understand what he's talking about, supply and demand, but it's definitely based on situation and that's my final thought.
Alright, and just to, just to kind of balance it out. Oh, Nick, did you wanna say something? Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I, back to that kind of like money scenario where giving money to the poor or all that jazz. I think in that scenario, it's more of like a moral call and, um. It is up to the people in power to try, if they want to, if they so desire, if they wanna like better society to. Devote their resources that they've worked for to help people in the lower classes, uh, move up. Or just devote resources to help their society in general, cause they worked for that money. So they have the right to do what they want with it. So it's up to kind of them to decide what they do with it.
Ah, charity. So should we, should we, yeah, so should charity like be like what we rely on for poor people to be able to make it? So to speak or something. Um, also an interesting point. So Boyer, um, to balance this out, I just wanna ask a question to you. That would like, if somebody were arguing on the side of kind of like being in favor of Marx, um, they would say, well. Has a capital, a pure capitalist system ever really worked either? So answer that question real quick.
So it's funny because me and Mr. Red, uh, for my mock trial edition had this exact same argument. Like every single point that's been made is the exact argument he made. And it's a really, really hard topic to argue about because neither side is concrete enough. So, I mean, the reason that Marx made up this system is because nothing has ever really worked. So a complete, uh, a complete capitalist society, everybody points to the United States as being one hundred percent free market capitalist. But we have so many socialist systems and a lot of the systems are actually keeping us in place and what's helping us. But some of these socialist systems are also what's destroying us, like the, the current, um, the current welfare system is terrible. And I mean, it, it's in a system where it keeps people down and as soon as you get off, uh. As soon as you get off of this system and you're, you're making money with a job, you're not even making as much as you were when you were on welfare. So we've, we've taken these socialist systems and we've made them too big to the point where it's just harming us more than helping us. But we're definitely not a completely capitalist society because we have these safety nets in place for people. That I'm sure Marx would be very proud of.
But we once were, we once were, like.
We were, at one time we definitely were and that gets into, uh, you see the, the trade fights between states that we've talked about in the past. Where all of this, you know, all these things happened between interstate trading and it just shut down.
No, I'm not talking about ARF's Confederation. I'm talking about when the United States was an actual country, um, like pretty much through most of the eighteen hundreds. I mean, pretty much for all of the eighteen hundreds and part of the seventeen hundreds as well, we were just pure capitalist. And so you would have these financial panics, you know, panic of eighteen ninety, it seemed like every twenty years we would have a panic. Panic of eighteen nineteen, panic of eighteen thirty seven, panic of eighteen fifty three, panic of eighteen seventy three, panic of eighteen ninety three. And basically it was a wild ride, like, I mean, and, and whenever you had a panic and you had all these people losing everything. And, and, and whatnot, they had no safety net. They had no place to go. They had, they were, sometimes were living in tents outside of cities with like no basic necessities. And so, um, the, I, the, the answer to this debate. May be that both sides have some good points and the, the answer is some sort of mix between the two. Um, which I think is what you were trying, trying to say, Boyer, is that our, ours capitalist society is actually ever since the New Deal. Ever since, you know, the Great Depression, has been tainted with a certain amount of socialism to a certain extent. Like, there's some things that we just all pay for and then everybody enjoys it. Like what you're, what you're engaged in right now, public education, uh, that's based off of taxpayer dollars. Um, it's, you know, it's something that we all pay for. We all pay for roads, you know, there's no private roads anymore. There's, you know, we, we, we all pay for, we pay our taxes and the taxes pay for it, so. Um, yeah, I'm gonna let you have the last word. Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, we've, I know what you were saying. We've, we've talked about the bubble, uh, is, is what we called it. You know, you had the bubble and then it would pop and then we'd crash and everything would go crazy and hectic. Uh, and that, when we had that completely, you know, free market capitalist system. One problem that we saw rise a lot was these monopolies that people were doing and they were getting. They were getting so successful that they would control the industry. And then, you know, it kind of got to be the, the bourgeoisie and proletariat system where one company would control. Their entire industry and you'd be forced to, you know, pay whatever they wanted you to. Um, and then that's, that's when we got into these safety nets and these restrictions on businesses and monopolies. So yeah, I, I do think it's a good thing that we adopted some of these socialist systems. But, um, now we're starting to, to overcorrect a little bit and we're trying to push more towards socialism and less towards capitalism.
Yeah, it's an interesting debate and, uh, you know, it's like if, uh, if the monopolist had been allowed to continue to do what they were doing. Could, could you see a French Revolution style uprising of the people? I feel like probably you could, um, because if the government hadn't stepped in and started busting up the trust. First under Teddy Roosevelt and then later, you know, under Wilson and, and whatnot, and even Taft to a certain extent. Um, like if that hadn't happened, um, the Marx might have been proven right, uh, about capitalism self-destructing. So, um, it's like, well, we're, this is just, we could debate like a whole class. We could just debate forever on this. We've gone overtime anyway, really, uh, debating it. It's a great topic. Um, I think we had an awesome debate on it. Uh, I'm sad that some of the people who would have really made it even better are, weren't able to join us. But, um, we will have to stop here, so I am going to end today's, uh, session and great job, everybody. Uh, I will see you in class on Tuesday, alright? Have a great weekend.